We'll officially begin the April 23rd, 2024 meeting. A call to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. If you please rise if you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get into public comment, we have a slide and a comment from the police chief. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Johansson. I am your chief of police here in San Bruno. Just briefly, wanted to touch on the paid parking program downtown and some questions that I know have been circulating in the community. Our paid parking program launched just about a month ago now. So my first ask is for a little bit of patience as we continue to work through some of the difficulties of what is a completely new program for the police department. And I wanted to post some resources here so that the community that may have questions or be seeking additional information sort of knows more clearly where to go. The first of those is our paid parking program information portal, which is on the city's website. You can get up-to-date information as to where the parking program is, as well as business permit allowances and other types of information like that about the paid parking program. There's also a link there to more information about parking in general and how you can get services that you're looking for. If there are questions that you have that are not answered there, the best course of action is to call the non-emergency number at the police department, which is 650-616-7100. For problems with the parking kiosks, meaning the machines you use to pay for parking, it is best to contact Laz. We have contracted with Laz Parking Services to not only do enforcement, but to maintain the kiosks in working order and to maintain them or to provide maintenance when something is wrong with them. Laz's typical hours are Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 6:00 and Saturdays from 10:30 to 7:00. They can be contacted at the email address listed on this slide or at the phone number listed below there of 510-377-7951. Parking violations and problems with the kiosks can be reported there to Laz. You can also report parking problems through the SB Responds app, which we've talked about numerous times previously at our meetings. There is a link there to access that application. And then finally, for illegal parking complaints after the hours listed for Laz or for those that require immediate tow, such as your personal driveway being blocked and you being unable to get in or out of your driveway, these can still be reported directly to the police department, again at that non-emergency number of 616-7100.
Thank you, Chief. Now we'll move on to...
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry?
Sure.
Just very, very brief. Will the same information be put out over social media and can it be shared with us just so we can help amplify it over through social media?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now let's move on to item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. How many speaker cards do we have, please?
I currently have four speaker cards.
Okay. So, City Clerk, if you can call the folks up as your police?
The first three, I have Justin, followed by Wassam Dawwa, followed by Rich Wong.
And the, I don't need to think we need to read it all, but we all know the etiquette and the process, and I appreciate you beginning. And please, it'll be, oh, I gotta wait for the clerk to come back. She'll set the timer. It'll be three minutes, and then when you hear the bell from the city clerk, please stop at that point if you have not concluded. All right, whenever you're ready, please.
Hello, council. This is not the first time you've seen me here, and it probably won't be the last. I've come up here tonight to make this public comment to call out Mayor Medina, Councilmember Salazar, for your cowardice. Last couple of months, there have been a genocide in Gaza. And instead of doing the moral thing, the right thing, to listen to your constituents and to use what power you can to end the suffering, instead you've decided to give excuse after excuse as to why it's either wrong or out of your purview to agendize and pass a ceasefire resolution. It's disappointing, and it's not too late to change your path. It's not too late to do the right thing, and it's not too late to help in any way that you can to end the suffering and to end the genocide and to put into any effort that any person with a heart and a soul would. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. I'd like to address our council members, Sandy Alvarez, Michael Salazar, and Rico Medina. I'd first like to address Sandy Alvarez. I just want to say thank you for your apology. You mentioned that the reason why you have been silent for so long was because of the community's... The community has been upset, and the community was grieving. But from my understanding as a moral individual, if I know anybody who's been grieving for any loss, I would apologize to them or give them some sort of comfort immediately, although it took four months. I understand you are trying to appease the Palestinian community, and you suggested to agendize raising the Palestinian flag in front of City Hall. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but we have been raising the Palestinian flag in front of City Hall for the past three months every week. That does not appease our demands. You can raise the flag if you wish, but that's not what we requested. I don't think you have been listening clearly to what we have been saying. If you'd like to appease the community, I suggest you look back to what we have been demanding month after month and come forward with an actionable agenda that would lead us in that direction, for instance, a ceasefire resolution. Michael Salazar, I want to thank you for your heartfelt statement, truly. I really felt your sincerity in your statement. As a person, I understand, and we've also had many conversations where I understood that as well. Although, again, it took you four months to make a statement. At the end of the day, you decide not to take any actions or provide any alternative solutions to our demand. Rico Medina, I want to thank you again for your apology. You also denounced the ongoing slaughter in Gaza and that there needs to be an immediate, it needs to stop immediately. These three members, again, have had no actionable item to what they have been saying, and we're looking for leaders who are willing to take action. You can say all these words, but as leaders, it is action that we are requiring. So please come up with a solution and appease the Palestinian community here in San Bruno.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council. Thank you for taking the time. For those who don't know me, my name is Rich Wong. I'm a community member here. I was really focused on crime prevention as well as public safety. And so I've recently become very concerned about the status of our streetlights in our neighborhood. It has made me quite anxious over the progress that has happened in the short time, or actually a long time, that it's taken to rectify the problem. I understand that San Bruno Police Department, one of the finest police organizations in the Bay Area, is offering some deterrence by having patrols go out in that area, but still the best deterrent in the middle of the night is to have the lights on. And so with that, you know, we need to be a little bit more vigilant with getting this thing solved as quickly as possible. Three cars have already been broken into in my neighborhood alone, and the likelihood of crimes of opportunity will continue to increase because the opportunity is there for them to hide in the darkness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
The last speaker is Virginia Chu.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council members. I again here to give you an update in the Rollingwood neighborhood. We're still in the dark. We're headed into month number two. These lights are older than most of us sitting in this room, so the lack of progress is very concerning, as Rich has mentioned. Safety is a number one priority. We are in 2024, and we should not be living in the dark. So I urge you to make this a priority, to update these antiquated lights, at least a minimum, to the majority of the neighborhood so we're not sitting in the dark. I understand 95 lights to replace them may be very costly, but if you can't, you know, do all 95 lights, then give us one every third light or something, just so that we're not in the dark. It's very scary and it's to be outing at night when it takes, what, five, six blocks to get home in the dark. So please, put yourself in our shoes. Our neighborhood is very frustrated, and we want to make sure that you hear our voices and make this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker.
No other speakers at this time. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, because we have heard a lot about the streetlights, and I know it is something that is a priority to the city right now, I was hoping maybe the city manager could give us just a really quick update on the efforts so far and the unfortunate failures of our attempts.
So I can be very, my own, I can be very quick on this, but I also have Matt Lee, the Public Works Director here, who can also perhaps provide a little more in-depth. You know, the RO streetlights are the oldest streetlights I believe we have in the city, and they are prone to failure, and I think we've shared this with the council many times so far in my council digest. The, every time we have some level of success, it blows a few somewhere else, and we're just constantly chasing the streetlight outage. We, interestingly, tonight, you will hear from the head of PCE who may have some, illuminate some ideas about what we can do with perhaps solar streetlights. The biggest issue we have is really that the streetlights are failing and that the replacement is going to be a very expensive and timely and require a lot of effort. And the supply chain, even for things like solar streetlights, is just, it's just a long one. It's a long wait. And so we are, we have spent in excess of $100,000 trying to repair these, and somewhere along the line, we need to, we need to stop doing that because we're just chasing our tails. And Matt, I don't know if you have, sorry, Public Works Director Lee, I don't know if you have any other thoughts to share?
Thanks, City Manager McIntyre, through the chair, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. So what City Manager McIntyre indicated is absolutely correct. We've, in the Rollingwood neighborhood alone, we've enacted repairs every week since this has been occurring. And every time we enact the repair, it fails somewhere else. We've had many of these discussions in the past, and that's why we are actually working through a design project to look at solar lights. Council invested $500,000 a couple of budget cycles ago, and we're currently in design to work through that. And like City McIntyre has indicated, City Manager McIntyre has indicated, these lights are newer technologies, so even if we move down that path and start to procure them, which we tried to do for temporary purposes, they still have long lead times. Some vendors may advertise on their website that they do have these solar lights and that they're work, but we've been testing them for a year. Some of them don't stay on, right? Or the ones that do work, some of them aren't even manufactured yet. So they'll tell you that they have it, but if you actually go to buy it, they don't have it yet. So this is definitely new technology. I've been to conferences and stuff where I've talked to other cities. We would be on the forefront of this. Most cities, say outside of California, are focusing on LED lights. We're focusing on solar LED lights to solve that problem. One of the challenges with the RO streetlight system, and we had a presentation on this a couple of years back, it kind of highlights the antiquatedness of the system itself. They essentially work like Christmas tree lights. So if one goes out, they all go out. There's no way for us to be able to wire it so that we get every other third light working. If we do that, we might as well rewire the whole system, which is costly, which is costly within itself, and from my understanding, we've never been able to figure out how to fund those. But currently in our process, we've identified ways to try to alleviate this situation. We've tried to order some solar streetlights to try to get a couple going in the neighborhood, but those are still on order. And that's ever since we've gone through a couple of instances where we tried to make the repair. And so I know that the lights look like they're off to the residents at night, but really what's happening is we will fix them, they will turn on for a couple hours, and you'll have a short or arcing somewhere in the neighborhood, and for safety concerns, we must shut them down immediately with PG&E. And so it looks like the lights aren't on, but if you notice sometimes they're on for maybe an hour or two, and we wonder why it's turned off. I mean, it's for safety reasons, right? That's, for me, fixing infrastructure is really important, but safety is even more important for us. And so we don't want anything to happen out there, and so we understand the challenges of safety with the lights. So what we are trying to do next, right, like City Manager McIntyre said, is to see if there's any other avenues we can potentially pursue to try to bring lighting sooner to the community. We're exploring all avenues. I believe we're currently on the right path. I do apologize to the community for the way our infrastructure is set up. I'm committed to trying to make sure that we improve on that situation. It may take some time, so I thank everyone for their patience, but I will say we are diligently working on it. When you, there will be a presentation later tonight that actually deals with paving. The manager that's going to talk about paving, he's also the guy that works on the streetlights. He lives in town. He knows what it is. He actually cares about the work that he does, right? And so we talk about this constantly. Every time we get something fixed within a week and we try to turn it on and it doesn't work, we go back with another solution. So we're actively, in short, we're actively really trying to work on it. We hope to get it on sooner than maybe the residents might even want because, you know, if we can fix that, we can move on to other things. There's a lot of stuff for us to kind of, infrastructure for us to maintain. So hopefully that provides satisfactory answer to the council. I'm here for any other questions.
Do want to thank you for both the city manager and the director for the comments and updating folks, not they're just here, but obviously, I'm sure all five of us have received the commentary of the lights and that it hasn't been a short duration. All right, with that, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. First one is item A, a spring drop-off with Recology, which will be located at 975 Sneath Lane this Saturday, the 27th, from 8:00 to 11:00. It's at the same location that they have every April and October. And again, that will assist you in hoping to, which has been motivating me to kind of cleanse a little bit and get some stuff to, again, it's E-Waste, it's latex paints, it's bulky items. There also, though, is also a compost giveaway as well that is occurring. Let's move on to, we have two presentations. And item B, our presentation is from PCE, better known as Peninsula Clean Energy, and we are fortunate and to have the CEO. And welcome, and thank you for being here. Mr. Hirschman?
Thank you so much.
Also, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor and council members. It's lovely to see you all this evening. My name is Shawn Marshall. I am the relatively new CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy. Happy to report that my predecessor, Jan Pepper, who retired last June, is faring well, and she sends her regards. Before I dive into tonight's content, I'd like to first acknowledge my colleague here, Mark Hirschman, who is our Director of Government Affairs. And I also want to give a special shout-out to Councilmember Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Medina? Not Mayor, sorry. My bad.
It's okay. Our names are spelt the same, so that happens all the time.
For some reason, I heard Mayor earlier. Excuse me. To Councilmember Medina, who was just elected to be Peninsula Clean Energy's vice chair, has also served on our executive committee and our audit and finance committee for many years. So we do appreciate Councilmember Medina, all of your support. And then just to your immediate my right, is Tom Hamilton, who serves as Councilmember Medina's alternate. So thank you so much for your service as well. I'm going to lead off here with a short video, but before we get there, I want to reiterate that providing affordable rates is priority number one for Peninsula Clean Energy right now. It is a crazy expensive time to live in California with historically high utility rates. We don't have a say in how PG&E sets its rates. You might recall that our piece of it is only the electric generation, but we are aware of skyrocketing utility bills, and we are doing our best to do everything we can to reduce our rates so that it lowers your overall PG&E bills. The good news is that Peninsula Clean Energy is good at many things. We're able to walk and chew gum, and so we are able to provide more affordable rates and also cleaner energy. So we'll stop here, have a quick video, and then I'll come right back. Nope, hold on. Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with the clear goal to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94% while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our community since 2016.
In the past year, we've secured our largest win contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and reduce gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings. So with Peninsula Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed, and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom-and-pop housing providers, that's really, really important to us because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve. Okay, thank you for watching that. So now I will just run through some brief highlights around some of our key programs and accomplishments, and then I'll wrap up with what we are doing here with the city of San Bruno and take any questions you might have. All right, let's see. So first, just a quick reminder, and for folks who may not be familiar with how Peninsula Clean Energy works, we are structured as a community choice aggregator per statute in the state of California. Our mandate is to, on the left there, the bright green, Peninsula Clean Energy is responsible for procuring and in some cases, developing renewable resources of power that we put onto the grid. That grid is managed by PG&E, so we are a partner agency with PG&E, and so that you, the end-use customer, can enjoy cleaner energy and lower rates. So we are not full public power. It's more of a hybrid model in partnership with the investor-owned utility. As mentioned earlier, one of the things that we've been focusing on here, in particular in the last year, is holding our electric rates down to be responsive to the justifiable outrage around skyrocketing utility rates right now. So the board, just back in January, for the first time ever, made a decision to freeze our rates at 2023 levels, which means that currently our customers are saving between 10% and 15% on their electric generation. Unfortunately, the other piece of that, the transmission and distribution piece, which is PG&E, has gone up, and so the net effect is unfortunately, your bills are probably still higher, but we're doing everything we can to pull that calculus down to help you guys save money. We are also provide cleaner energy than PG&E. So what this illustration shows is that, this is an emissions factor illustration from 2022. We'll soon be sharing the data for '23. It's going to look almost identical. And so what it shows is that PCE's standard service EcoPlus, which you see there on the bottom in navy, has nearly zero emissions over the last three or four years. The little bit of emissions that there is, that's there is a geothermal, and we're hoping that the California Energy Commission will reclassify geothermal to count as a renewable resource, in which case we will be at zero emissions. As noted in the video, the really important metric to remember is that since our launch, we've been able to reduce the carbon emissions for our county by 94%, which is pretty significant in seven years. Next up are a few examples of some of the programs we offer. I'm not going to run through every single line here, but this one is really the work we do to support home electrification. And so I'm just going to highlight one of our most popular new programs is a $10,000 0% loan that is repaid on a customer's bill. It is a simple one-page application. We do not check your credit history. You just have to be a customer of PG&E, and you can use that $10,000 in any way you want to replace gas appliances in your home. It has a five-year repayment, and we've issued darn near 500 of those just in one year alone. Super popular program. Next up, we'll talk a little bit about our electric vehicle programs. There have been many of them, but the ones that are super popular are the EV-ready program. The gentleman in the multifamily housing project was talking about our ability to help them install several EV chargers for overnight parking for renters. It's very hard for people who don't own their own homes to find access to chargers, so this is a real focus for us. We also have rebates for used EVs that are available to all of our customers, don't have to be income-qualified. And then, of course, we have our e-bikes program, which we run annually and always sells out. The next piece of our program, programs are what we can do to partner with our local government jurisdictions, just like the city of San Bruno. So we have worked with many of the cities through the county to update your climate action plans, to work for public EV fleets and charging. We have a government PV program, which puts solar installations on public facilities, including your aquatic center. We're just in the middle of getting that done. And we have two new grant programs that the board just adopted here over the last four months, one of which is a new member agency energy grant. San Bruno is allocated just over $500,000, I think it's 506, that you could use, for example, to match up with any city funds for solar lighting or any other project that fits within PCE's sustainability goals. So it has to be related to the work that we do, but you can use that any way you want. It's a simple application. Once you are allocated the money, the deal here is that it has to be spent within 24 months. So there is a little bit of a time, time issue to get, we want the money to get out to the communities. So almost done here. Just going to highlight a few things specific to San Bruno. So first off... So first off, to get a sense of scale, your city has nearly 16,000 customers. These are active PCE accounts with a 96% participation rate. So we do thank you for all of your efforts to keep your citizens' participation high. Since 2016, your constituents have saved over $5.3 million on their utility bills, which helps. That's just money back in your pockets. And I have a new update that I got today that the total amount that our customers have saved across our service territory is now reaching 150 million, and we will have more updates as we go. So that number is growing. I mentioned already the solar project underway at your aquatic center, and we've had so far four public EV chargers installed in the city, 23 more in the pipeline, and you have four high school students participating in our youth climate ambassadors program. So if you want to learn more, there's a link there at the bottom of the screen. We have pages for each city on our website, which talks about, we keep it up every month, what the impacts are to your community for participation in PCE. So to wrap up, I will just run through a few quick developments. So many of you may have heard about the $68 million community reinvestment package that the board authorized earlier this year. That did a number of things, including sending a $300 rebate to our CAREFARA economically vulnerable customers. That was sent out at the holidays. And then we've also allocated additional money for member agency grants, as just noted, member agency loans, battery projects for schools, and additional battery projects for homes. There's 11 different programs that were funded, and you can check that out on our website if you want to learn more. We also are going to be welcoming Caltrain to our service later this year in September. We're very excited about that. I will say the board recently made, just as recent as last month, some policy changes to adjust our 100% renewable goal, to push it out by a couple of years. We are at a historical high watermark for the price of energy, and in order to keep rates low, we decided to make that, or the board decided to make that trade-off. So we'll be getting there a couple of years late, but the goal remains. Last but not least, I will say that we have adopted kind of a new mantra for PCE, which is putting our customers first. And so in every decision we make, we think about what do our customers need? What are they asking for? Will they use it? And then constantly re-upping that and checking in. So thank you so much for your time. From our team to yours, we say thank you very much, and we look forward to a continued partnership with the city.
And we want to thank you very much for being here, bringing all this information to us. And you may have mentioned there is another CEO who is in the news, but may I say, this CEO has a lot of positive, incredible things to share with us that's benefiting the community. Questions from colleagues? Absolutely. Councilmember?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, Sean, and to really let you know it's great having you onboard as our new CEO. Also worth noting is that our chair is also a woman, so it's an interesting way of seeing women rising up and leading this organization. It has been an honor and a pleasure serving on Peninsula Clean Energy. It's great seeing the economic benefits, seeing some of those benefits come directly to the residents that we're serving and at the rack, and also seeing potentially the solar streetlights, which is an enlightening endeavor. So thank you very much and looking forward to this upcoming year.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I just wanted to echo the thanks, and it's an honor to be a tiny part of the organization. Councilmember Medina doesn't step aside very often to allow me to step in because he's so passionate about the work and is doing great work along with the rest of the organization. I've been a huge fan of PCE since its inception and signed up at 100% the first opportunity that I could get. And this is really an example, you know, we hear a lot about government and what, you know, the various failings, and a lot of them are justified. This is, PCE is an organization, an example of government done right, where it's focused on the people, it's focused on the needs of the people, and of our planet all at the same time, and doing such great work and saving us all money at the same time. So it's just, I can't say enough, thank you.
And also, I always, at these times, want to acknowledge Supervisor Pine because he had a vision, and I don't think when he started introducing it and going out with it, people could really envision where it would be today. So a lot of kudos to him. And as far as being on the Caltrain JPB, we're looking forward to that as well with electrification. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Hirschman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good rest of your evening.
You too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item C, receive information from the San Bruno School District on Children's Day and Book Day, and we were going to hear from one of the trustees and organizers of the event, Jennifer Blanco.
Members at home who are watching the meeting, our gentlemen back here who are making sure that we have technologies so everyone can watch at home, and members of our staff, and the community who's here tonight, and our city council. Good evening, everyone. So my name is Jennifer Blanco. I am one of the trustees on the San Bruno Park Elementary School District and alumni of SPPSD. And we have with me Jessica Losada. She is a parent, a parent in our district at John Muir and also the PTA president. And she also has taken a very, in the last couple of years, has taken a more active role in the committee. So she'll be speaking a little bit on her experience in having that active role with our committee and making sure that we have a very successful Children's Day Book Day. So thank you very much for allowing us to come and present tonight. And so I just wanted to ask if the video, if the video's being able, if we can watch, if we can make sure we present the video. But before we show the video, I wanted to first just give a quick brief history of Dia de los Niños. So Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros was founded back in 1996 from bilingual children's author Pat Mora. And in other countries, they actually have a Children's Day. In our country, we don't have a Children's Day. We have a Grandparents' Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, right? We have everything else but not really a Children's Day. So in other cultures, other countries, they do. And so because she is a children's author, she combined the love of books and Children's Day. And so hence, we have Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, and it was born back in 1996. Now, here in San Bruno, we have, we actually are, we have the fortunate experience of bringing it to our community. Every community celebrates Children's Day Book Day differently. And fortunately for us as a state, California is a DIA state. And what that means is when a state library system takes on Children's Day Book Day, there's a funding mechanism where libraries can apply for grants, and then they can either purchase books or they can put on some sort of program. And we usually tend to partner with our library, which we have since its inception here in San Bruno, since 2009. And so DIA is also a day that connects our children with books, exposes them to cultures, honors home languages, and reinforces connection to community. And the other thing I wanted to say about Dia de los Niños is there's many components with the way that we celebrate it here in our community. We have, there's a parent ed education component to it, a cultural component, and some years we do, we are able to have a health fair component to it. We're going to have half a health fair this year. And so, and then there's a literacy component as well. And so we are, we are very fortunate to be able to celebrate it here in our community. I know where Wood City has one, but the school district doesn't host it. We're the only school district in San Mateo County out of our 23 school districts that actually hosts Dia de los Niños. And so I wanted to let Jessica speak a little bit about it, and then we can perhaps show the video.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Losada, as she had mentioned, and I'm truly honored to be able to help on this organization and on Dia de los Niños. You see, I grew up in a culture where Children's Day is celebrated. And so it's great for me to actually be able to bring this to my own community and be able to show my children, my boys, what this is all about, although a bit different from where I've seen it, as my parents are both of Latino background. And so I've actually seen this in countries like Mexico and Peru, and it's a huge celebration, lots of food, lots of music, and it's a grand day of kids enjoying everything to do with crafts, and it's a big celebration. So I'm excited for that. I joined about 10 years ago, if you can believe that. 10 years ago, I joined Jennifer and I met her, and she said, "Come help me with this event." I said, "Okay." There was, I kid you not, there was 10 tables set up. There was about four or five presenters, perhaps 50 to 60 people that showed up, if I'm being honest. Last year, we had 28 tables. We had several hundred people, and this year, coming up this Saturday, we are now at 39 tables. We have so many people that have already confirmed that are showing up, that we have already prepared ourselves for a good 700 to 800 people that are going to be coming through at any point in time. So that is a huge success, and I'm very proud to be part of it, and I'm also very proud to honor it. Now, I do help. I am the person behind the scenes. I'm that person that likes to set up the floor plans, likes to make sure that we are completely safe and that we're running a safe operation, that we've crossed all of our Ts and dotted our Is. I'm that person behind the scenes because that's just what I love to do. So I thank you for letting me speak and take a moment, but I am very excited about it. Thank you for letting me in. And if it's not confusing, I'll confuse you even more. I'm Jessica, she's Jennifer. The names sound alike. We both wear glasses, and we're both about the same height. So, so not confusing. But again, I'm the one behind the scenes, behind the scenes.
So before we show the video, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple of people. First, I'll start with city staff, and with Jessica speaking about having, running a safe operation, I just want to say an extra special thank you shout-out to our fire marshal, Gage. He and I have, we have established a very special relationship to make sure that we're adhering to fire codes. And this is the first time I've ever learned about that when we have those type of events, whether it's indoor, outdoor, that we need one person for every 250 people there. For what that means is we need a crowd control manager. So just this morning, you're looking at an official crowd control manager. So that means I can go work at Chase Center and maybe go listen to some concerts for free while I get paid. But, so I'm looking forward to serving that capacity as well here in our community, make sure that we do adhere to fire codes. And so I wanted to, and also, so thank you to Gage and sharing me all this information that we need to adhere to. Travis, Damian, Audrey, Jared, Dan, and our fire chief who's here with us tonight as well. And then on the city, on our school district staff, I want to first say thank you to all of my colleagues that, who already, some have come and gone through the years since 2009. We've had Dia de los Niños in our community since 2009. And so just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues, current and past, for allowing me to plan this for our community, because this is a group effort. And obviously, I couldn't be able to do it if my board wasn't passionate about bringing this tradition to our community. So I also want to say thank you to Mariana Zeke, our facilities guys, Alejandro, Hugo, and Carlos, who are going to be there working for us to make sure that everything is in its place. Also, my superintendent, Matt, and my co-chair, Adriana Shea. And so if we can show the video, that I'd really appreciate it. It's about three minutes.
Today, we're at Children's Day here in San Bruno City Park, which focuses on children, children's literacy. And in our community, this event has a really big sort of bilingual focus.
The title says it all, right? It's Dia of the Children, Dia of the Book. Like literacy is an extremely important thing. Celebrating that as often as we can is something worthwhile, and I'm glad that we do something like this.
It's so important to read to our kids, even when they're just firstborn. With technology now, it's so easy for our kids to be on their iPad. You know, we forget about how important it is to read. Children, they bring so much joy to everybody, and they're just so amazing. It's a day for us to appreciate them and to honor them and just to celebrate our kids.
There are vendors, partners from all across the county, agencies that support kids, agencies support community. All our schools are represented. We have music, we have art. A really wonderful day, supporting kids and sharing all the resources we have in this community.
Siento que es muy sano y es para todas las edades, desde el más chiquito al más grande y para uno como padre. Es tiempo también para dedicarle más a los hijos, para que ellos disfruten de lunes a viernes escuela, no salen de casa, y siento que esto es el momento indicado. También da mucha información para los padres que algunas cosas que no sabemos. Nos explicaba muy bien, siento que da muy buena información en inglés y en español.
This day is really dedicated to kids, and that is what we're about as a school district. It is an international event, so you don't see it as much across the United States, but it started in Latin America. And one of our trustees, trustee Blanco, really adopted it and has run with it and created this great day for the community.
I know me growing up, it's a Mexican holiday, April 30th, Dia de Niño. So I just think it's great that it is, you could say, crossed over to the American culture, you know? Because I remember me growing up, there was never anything like this.
It's amazing to have these events because it really brings community together, and it shows all of the dynamic resources that we have here in San Mateo County. We're here for the community. Kids are having fun. There's lots of different festivities for the kids to do, so it's an amazing event overall.
I've lived in this community all my life. I'm a product of the district. I went to Bel Air, went to Parkside, went to Cats, so definitely can say I was raised in San Bruno. Almost all parents, I'm sure I'm not the only one, where they dream about their kids going to their school when they're kids. Definitely an honor and a blessing to be able to have them go through the same school system as I did.
I'm a resident of San Bruno, so it's really important for me to be active in my community, especially when you live in the community that you serve. My kids are growing up here, and I want them to have a healthy environment, a great learning environment, just as I want my neighbors' children to have that same experience.
Es muy bonito, la verdad, y el aire libre, siento que es lo que le hace falta a uno en la cotidianidad. Pues pues aquí va a estar un poco más aburrido, pero no, la verdad que me sorprendió. Está muy bonito. Vengan, que no tengan pena, y que aquí es para venir a convivir con demás familias, conocer personas, y disfrutar con los hijos.
And if we can put up the flyers, want to share the sponsors for this year, as every year the sponsorship does change. I'm just waiting for my sentence to come. Okay, all right. Okay, great. Thank you. So this year, our sponsors are San Bruno Professional Firefighter Association, San Bruno Police Association, the San Bruno Rotary, San Bruno Lions Club, San Mateo County First Five Commission, our Rollingwood PTA from last year. What they did was, when they shut, when they had to close down shop with the PTA, they gave the school district money for...
they gave the school district money for this year's Children's Day. So we were very appreciative and honored to have them think so highly of Dia de los Niños, so they gave money to Dia de los Niños. And so we have our San Bruno Education Foundation, North County Project Reed, Archoke Joe, San Bruno Recology, AMR, the American Medical Response, who provides ambulance services to our county, Monterra Credit Union, that is formerly San Mateo Credit Union, and our, of course, last but not least, San Bruno Public Library, who's been with us since its inception. So everything is free to the community. We want to make sure that this is a day where we honor our kids' place in society. And also, we don't want to make, we want to make sure that parents don't need to worry about how much is everything going to cost, because we have a free barbecue sponsored by our San Bruno Lions Club. We have, everything's free, balloon twister. Two years ago, we had this balloon twisters walking around in stilts. It was a pretty cool feeling, because I thought I was at a circus. Free face painting, arts and crafts. And the books are provided by North County Project Reed, who's housed here in South San Francisco. And we do have a lot of resource partners who are coming through this year. As Jessica did mention, we have about 39, 40 tables this year. So that's really great, because that means we're bringing more information to share with our community, where sometimes our parents, our families, don't know where to go to say, "Hey, I need help with how to pay my P G N E bill or my water bill." And so we have, we're partnering with county organizations who are coming here to share information with our parents. And so this year, every year, we highlight a different cultura, a different culture. And this year, we were able to bring San Francisco Carnaval to San Bruno. I don't know if you all are familiar with Loco Bloco. That's, they usually tend to win first place in Carnaval in San Francisco, down in the Mission and the Parade. And so for years, I've been trying to get Loco Bloco to come, and finally, they said yes. It pays not to give up. Learned that by my mom. So Loco Bloco's coming to performance, they perform at from 2:00 to 2:40. So if you like to come through and you want to make sure you want to see a piece of Carnaval here in our community, to bring a huge piece of Mission District culture to San Bruno, 2 o'clock. So thank you so much for the time, and I hope that if you haven't been to Dia de los Niños, I got to tell you, you're missing out. But you have been, I know you're going to come back. So thank you so much for the time, and if you have any questions about Dia, this year Dia, please let me know. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, and thank you very much, Jessica, as well. And she already, I see, went behind the scenes soon as she was done talking, so. But no, thank you both for being here. Thank you very much for the commitment and the passion and giving the community this opportunity.
One to five.
One, that's.
I'm sorry, 12 to five.
So 12 to 5.
We added a half hour this year. It's a little bit more entertainment.
Thank you very much.
Just real quick, I apologize.
That's all right.
Parking is going to be very difficult with that many people showing up. Get the word out, if those that can walk or get dropped off, because 800 people at that park and there's baseball games going on?
No.
No baseball, great. They did that when I was coaching, so, okay, that's a good thing.
Yes, parking, we have at El Cristal, 201, Babuah, and we're going to have signs leading to the parking. And so that parking, we're able to alleviate that part of the program at El Cristal.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you, Jessica. Are there any comments in regards to presentations?
I have no speaker cards.
All right, let's move on to item six, consent. All items are considered routine or implemented by earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. It will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Any separate vote items for A, B, or C? Any additional comments or questions on A, B, or C? Any public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
Action by board.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on consent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve items A, B, and C on consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has passed as unanimous. Now we move on to item seven, public hearing.
Item A, hold public hearing and adopt a resolution approving an update to the user fee schedule for fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Thank you very much. And we see two folks have taken front and center. And we'll begin with our CFO. To begin. Is this the anticipation, like wait for it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Nick Pegaros. I'm the city's chief financial officer. And I'm, tonight, we are presenting to you an update to our user fee schedule. We will get the PowerPoint booted up here in just a second. There we go. So we're, the user fee schedule this year is a, has been a collaborative effort with my colleague, Community Development Director Gilli, taking the lead based on his experience from last year. So we will, we will have the majority of the presentation from him. So if we could just go to the agenda. We'll start with the objective course background, which I will provide, and then I'll hand it off to Mr. Gilli for his, for the discussion of the changes and wrap it up with the recommendation. Our objective this evening is to, is for the council to adopt an update to the user fee schedule. What the user fee schedule is, is it's a document that captures all of the fees that the city charges that require city council approval. And if we can go to the next slide, I'll give a little more background on that. So first and foremost, the user fee study is an integral element of the city's financial, or fiscal sustainability. We have a cost recovery policy that guides how we build the user fee, the user fee schedule. There are, the user fee schedule is specific to San Bruno. It's specific to the services that we provide, the financial condition or financial factors that are specific to San Bruno, such as both service level as well as, as well as compensation and the types of services that we provide. One important element here, and Director Gilli will talk about the timing for implementation, is that several of our fees are for services that the market does not provide. In other words, we are the only, we are the only provider of land use-related entitlements. And so the fees that we charge have to follow specific state guidelines. In addition, I want to draw the council's attention to a budget of principle that was adopted for the, to help guide the development of this year's fiscal, of fiscal year 25's budget. And that is to actively pursue revenue enhancements and strive to achieve full cost recovery for all fee-based services, except where the city council establishes a public interest in providing a subsidy. And that last point is particularly important, because ultimately, the city council has the discretion to set fees based on, based on the council's policy directives and objectives. However, what I, what I do, what we will point out is that all of the recommendations that we have this evening are compliant with the, with the full cost recovery and the cost recovery policy. And again, is critical to providing the services provided to the community. Later this evening, you'll receive a presentation from me relative to our general fund budget for fiscal year 25. Staff has been hard at work, which is one reason Director Gilli has assisted and taken the lead on the fee schedule. The Finance Department has been hard at work identifying and working through various options to balance the structural budget deficit that the city finds itself in for a variety of factors that we will, that we will go into. Currently, the structural deficit sits at $4 million, and we're projecting that that will increase to about $13 million in about 10 years. One of the key drivers in our fiscal deficit are unfunded mandates. And again, Director Gilli will talk about some of those unfunded mandates from the state that require revenue sources if we are to provide those services and meet those obligations. So with that, I will hand it off, oh, sorry. One more slide, one more slide to talk about. With respect to, with respect to the fee setting process, it's really in three different buckets. The first is the cost of services study. This is generally done by a independent, it's an independent analysis conducted by a firm that is knowledgeable of the various laws that relate to state user fees in California. The cost of services study, which was last completed in, which was adopted by council in 2021 by Will Dan, looked at the volume of activities, over, for example, how many water heater permits do we issue? The amount of time required to issue those permits, the inspections, et cetera. The, the study then goes into the direct costs. So who, who has hand and who touches that permit? And how does that permit, and what is their cost? And then the final is, the, the study will look at compliance. And so when we talk about compliance, we speak to both regulations related to fee study, to fees that the city may impose. But in addition, statute, fees that are set by statute that we cannot change. And there are those in several departments. In addition to the direct costs of service study, our consultants will look at a cost allocation, which is, are the indirect costs, all of the overhead costs from facilities, facility maintenance to general administration. Those, that study, those, those cost of service studies really feed into our user fee schedule. In addition to that, I want to highlight NEXUS studies, which are the basis for our impact fees and rate studies, which are the basis for our water and wastewater services. We're here, once, once the study is complete, then we move into the administration and implementation of the, of the cost of services study through the user fee schedule. Best practice is that we do a cost of services study every four to seven years. It's quite, quite the heavy lift, so in the interim, the city staff will do, will do an annual review. We'll look at fee adjustments based on the cost of providing the services, primarily personnel costs. We'll also identify new fees and updates to existing fees. And then one point I'd like to raise that, that the council may be familiar with is that we have a number of appendices to the user fee schedule, which capture the rates, other rates that are adopted by city council through separate actions. So there is no, those rates are governed by those separate actions and are not affected by this evening's action on the user fee schedule. So with that, I'll hand it off to Director Gilli.
Thank you very much. And so I will start to go through the fee updates themselves. There are three categories of updates. As was noted, the, in 2021, a comprehensive analysis was approved by city council and prepared by Will Dan. And in some cases, fee increases were phased over four years. This is the fourth year. And so the first part of the fee update is to identify those fees and give the fourth year update to them. Once, and just, just for ballpark numbers, I'd estimate no more than 20% of the fees had that fourth year update as part of it. Once that's done, then we apply indexing to each of the fees that we are allowed to. As was noted, there are certain fees that we're not allowed to index, but the majority we are. And as was noted in the staff report, the indexing for this user fee update is, is proposed to be different than in the past year. And then the, once that is done, there's, there's the addition of new fees or the revision of existing fees based on new information about the amount of staff time certain services take. And so we'll go through that as well. On the side of indexing, the primary purpose of indexing is to make sure the fees continue to achieve the cost recovery targets that the council set in 2021. If we don't index, then we will not, our, our cost recovery will, will continue to drop in its total percentage. For this round, there was a detailed analysis by the Finance Department of what the increased cost of service for full-time staff has been. And it was found that that is greater than the Consumer Price Index or the CPI. And thus, what we, what we did for the majority of the fees in, in the lighter shade of brown is we took the full cost identified in the 2021 adopted study and applied the increase in city cost for providing those, those services to roughly two thirds of the fees. Some of the existing fees didn't exist in 2021. There are newer fees that were added since then. And so instead of being able to go to 2021 and benchmark from that point, instead, we went to last year and simply applied the increase to what the fees were last year. And that's the darker shade of brown. Then there's a category of fees primarily in, in the, in the Community Services Department, where the services are primarily provided by part-time employees. The increase in cost over time to the city of part-time staff versus full-time staff are different. And so the indexing for the fees provided by part-time employees was a weighted indexing of a mix of this year's CPI and the, the larger cost of, of the city providing services. Then the last piece of the pie, if you will, of, of the fees that are indexed in this agenda item are the development impact fees, which admittedly aren't user fees, and maybe in the next round will be in, in the appendices. But at this point, it is in this document. And so that is indexed based on the construction, construction cost index for the San Francisco area, which is called for by ordinance. And so those were indexed in that manner. So each of these four categories of fees were indexed in a different manner, but all to get to the point where they achieve the cost recovery targets that the council has, has set forth.
There's a question on this particular slide from the vice mayor.
If I could, thank you. Peter, can you explain that particular pie chart? Is that the number of different fees, or is it the dollar amount of those fees? What are we seeing in that pie chart?
Yeah, it's the former. It's the number of.
The sheer number of distinct fees. Wow, okay. Thank you.
And it, this is an approximation, just to show that the bulk of them were, of the, of the indexing were in the first two methods. Okay, so now we move on to the new and revised fees. In the written staff report, there is a brief explanation of each. I have slides that list them all, but I'm not going to go through each one of them, but I'm happy to come and answer any questions if you want more elaboration on any particular item. On this, on this slide, it has the newer revised fees for the clerk's office, for community development, of which there are many. One of the reasons there are more for community development is that we are in the process of amending a lot of processes that changes the amount of hours spent on certain tasks, which is a primary factor in how the fees are calculated. There's also, we have a couple of fees in the Finance Department that are revised. In the Fire Department, a handful as well. And then the library, which is part of community services, our Public Works Department, and then our parks and recreation functions, which again, is also part of the Community Services Department. Again, if there's any specific interest in talking about any of these, please, please do ask the question, and we can go into more detail on them. One, one fee that is being changed that I do want to spend more time talking about is the general plan maintenance fee. This is, this is an existing fee that has been, is charged on all. This is, this is an existing fee that has been, it is charged on all building permits as a percentage of, of the valuation of the project that goes towards a, a reserve fund that is used for long-range planning. Staff looked at the anticipated long-range planning initiatives that will need to be done over the next eight years. The majority of them are, are required by law. Others are initiatives that would be necessary to address city council goals. And the cost in $20,24 is, is, over these eight years is projected to be 11.9, 11.9 million dollars, almost, almost 12 million. This is for an update to the transit corridor plan, which is going to start with a reassessment, which will occur next year. The expectation is the reassessment will identify amendments that should be made. That itself will be an, an initiative on its own. There's the housing element policy implementation, which is mandated by the state, generally without any funding. There's the, there's, there's the climate action plan and policy implementation, as well as the safety element update, which is, the safety element update is already funded, but there will be policy implementations such as ordinance amendments or municipal code amendments that will also eventually have to be done. So as I noted, we currently do have a fee established at 0.4% of, of, of valuation of a building permit. And what that is projected to provide the city is, over the same eight-year period, is roughly $6 million. So roughly half of what is needed. Seeing as we do not expect there to be alternative funding sources or available funds in the general fund to help with, with these costs. And since so many of these initiatives are mandated by law, the recommendation is that we increase the general plan maintenance fee from 0.4% to 0.7% for next fiscal year, and then to 0.9% in the fiscal year after that and ongoing. Doing that with the projected construction activity over time would provide us with revenue that is, is pretty much equivalent to what we, we believe will be our need. So that is the recommendation in the, in the fee schedule. And just for some context on what, what this means, if an individual files, applies for a building permit for a project that has a valuation of $1,000, so a pretty minor improvement, currently they would pay $4 towards the general plan maintenance fee. If the fee is increased to 0.7%, that becomes $7 next year. If it then goes up to 0.9% in those future years, it's $9. On the flip side, if there is a large new commercial building that has a valuation of $10 million, these fees go into the tens of thousands and, and, but cumulatively, it, it adds up to being able to pay for the needed long-range planning efforts. Closing out the presentation, in, in the preparation of these documents, we did discover that there were two notes that exists in the fiscal year 23, 24 fee schedule that were not, that were omitted in, in the new one. Therefore, these are fees that council approved last year, and I believe were part of, of prior years that, based on staff error, were not put in, 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 in the proposed. And we would request that council consider as part, as part of adopting this fee schedule, adding, adding this note. This relates to parks and recreation specifically for additional non-resident fees for, for the, for the drop-ins at the rack. The exact language is, is shown in, in the highlighting and as part of the recommendation slide, if council is interested in doing this, I have a specific language of what we would like council to read into the motion. So closing out, the user fee schedule update is not a project subject to CEQA because it will not result in any physical change to the environment. Therefore, no additional, no environmental analysis is required. For, for fiscal impact, adoption of the fee schedule will have a positive impact. The revenues for services will be more closely aligned with council cost recovery targets. The projected revenue across all funds for next fiscal year is estimated to be just under 1 million. The projected budget numbers at this point don't show this because the fee schedule is not adopted. But if this is adopted, then those, then the budget documents can be updated. And then increasing the general plan maintenance fee would secure funding for the long-range planning efforts, both those required by law and those that align with priorities of council, and allowing us to do these initiatives with minimal impact on the general fund, which staff believes is, is important. So, excuse me. With the recommendation, the recommendation, staff recommends council adopt the resolution approving the user fee schedule for fiscal year 24, 25. The fee schedule to go into effect on July 1 of 2024, except for two pieces, that chapter nine, and these are the parks and recreation fees, will go into effect on May 1 of 2024. That is because that will allow community services, community services to start to pre-sell memberships at the rack, as well as the note about the non-resident fees for the daily drop-ins in section eight of chapter nine being amended as, as shown on the screen. Want to note that development-related fees have, have to be approved 60 days in advance of going into effect, which is why we are here at this date, and the effective date is, is July 1. But the recreation fees do not need that 60-day, 60-day period. So legally, council is able to approve the parks and rec components of this for May 1st. With that, that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the, thank you to both for the presentations and information. Can we just highlight, just when it comes to the nonprofits and the fireworks booths? That obviously has come up. I, I know that we've received an email that there will be a upcoming meeting on May 1st. The item will be coming back on May 14th. But if there's anything you'd like to just add, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, as, as part of, one of my first tasks when I started with the city was to work through and send out the, the cost recovery fee billings for the annual fireworks program, our resolution and the, the, the actions that the city council had adopted going before 20, 2005. I looked and I found these elements in 2003. But in 2008, the council adopted an ordinance resolution that spoke specifically to what fees and charges would be recovered through the, through, after the fact, to offset the city's costs to encourage to, to, to manage the illegal fireworks response and cleanup. Working with the groups, I, it was a little unclear to me that the fee that had been charged for, for many years, for two decades, whether it was an application fee or whether it was a reimbursement fee. And through my conversations with the city departments, it became evident to me that the current fee schedule does not, or the current fee, fee schedule does not include an application fee, which caused for some confusion relative to, to the, how the fire stand safety clearance fee was, was treated, which is considerably more than, than what an application would typically cost. So as part of this process, first step is to, for it to request city council adoption of an application fee, which we looked at the time required and the individuals involved to provide, to process the application. We looked at that and we arrived at a recommended fee of $95. With city council's approval this evening, we will go ahead and send out the application forms or the permit application forms this week to the groups so that they can process those, so they can begin work on those applications with the, with the fee of $95. What you're referencing, Mr. Mayor, is that in communications with several groups today and over the last, well, mostly today, we are meeting with the groups on May 1st to go over the, 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 the program itself, how the cost recovery, how the cost recovery operates, as well as, we will return to council on May 14th with a, with a staff report that discusses some of the requests that they, that the groups have made. But what I would like to highlight is that we will be reevaluating the bills that went out to the groups based on the information that we discovered relative to the application fee. So the groups will receive a revised bill. And then because the billing came late in the year, we anticipate asking the city council to waive the increase from 2022 to 2023 for, for that, for this year. And then in 2020, for 2024, to work, we'll present a option for the council to consider that would make the, the fees more, they'll make them better known to the groups so that then they can adjust their, their surcharges that are passed on to the customer before the, before the bill is due.
Thank you for that explanation. And again, they're asking for just, I think, that, that's what May 1st is for, a clear understanding. Please help us through this process. In addition, it is law that we cannot charge more. You cannot make money. The city only can charge to recoup its staff time and/or other items related to. Okay. Questions from colleagues on the presentation at this time?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Thank you, through the chair. So thank you for the, thank you both for the presentation. Regarding the general plan maintenance fee, and there's several components of it, including climate action plan development. We heard earlier tonight that PCE might be able to help with funding for climate action plan development, and I'm hoping we're exploring that option to help offset at least part of that 11.9 million? Is that something that, that we, we can look at?
For, for really all of the long-range initiatives, we will be exploring a combination of grants from a number of agencies and such. The, the proposal to, to, the rationale behind proposing a fee that projected to provide just enough for the costs allows us the, the, kind of the certainty that if we don't end up getting any grants and fees, we're still able to do the work. And if we, if we are able to get certain grants, we may actually be able to do more long-range items that, that, that the council may be interested in.
Got it. All right, thank you. And then second question, in the staff report, it's indicated that, that this isn't the, this, this isn't all of the fees that the, that the city charges for everything. There's, there's utilities and business taxes and, and then in, in particular, where I'm focusing is on police fines and penalties, and, and that these will be brought to us at a future meeting. Is there any estimate on when the, specifically the police fines and penalties schedule will be brought forward to us? And the reason that I'm asking is that there is particular interest in the community of raising the fine for street parking longer than 72 hours, as it is still significantly cheaper to leave a car in, in a neighborhood and pay, and take an Uber and pay the fine than it is to pay for airport parking, because the fine is, is pretty low. So I'm, I'm just curious as to when, when we estimate, if we have an estimate of when, when that will be brought forward to us.
Yeah, so council member Hamilton, the Director Gilli has, has shared with me that the appendices are ready to come to council. They, they require some, you know, some preparation of the staff report. I would estimate that we would return no later than the, than the first meeting in June, if not sooner. But I, I'd like to, you know, the first meeting in June is important because that's our budget hearing. And, and so if we could do it sooner, we will, but I don't want to overpromise.
Got it. I hope my, I hope my, my comment on my reason for asking the question resonates as you prepare those. Thank you. I'm good for now.
Other questions from colleagues? Councilman Medina?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I know this is a, a lot of work to go through. I specifically wanted to thank you for the clarification on the fireworks application fee. That has had one of our residents send various emails around to the council, and I think we finally have some clarity of what the situation is, that we needed to have an application fee. And then there's a cost recovery process that we're going to hear more about later on, after you meet with the groups that do sell the fireworks. I wanted to see if this was appropriate time, since the, the rack fees are in the presentation, that if it was fair to just have a better understanding of how these fees were set up. I know we had an original presentation on it, but I also know that staff did have a table set up to where there was some engagement with our community during the Easter egg hunt, and if the fees at that time were shared, so to hear from our community, like, what are the fees and what the feedback was from them? And what caught me, which off-guard a little bit today, was the fee for, is it true that we're charging a fee for 14 years age and up as the same as for an adult? I, I haven't seen that anywhere else, and I'm just curious about a few of those questions. The one other thing while I have, while I can just go ahead and, there's two more, are the non-resident fees within the typical range? And then probably, it's not related to the fee, but the assurance is that when the rack opens, how many San Bruno residents will be able to attend where non-residents could kind of bump? And I remember we're hearing that there were some precautions that were, or we were trying to set up a program that kind of made sure more residents did, were able to enjoy our new rack. So I just wondered if, if you had any additional information on that.
Travis Carlin, Community Services Director. Thank you, Councilmember Medina. I'll start with your first question, so the feedback from the egg hunt. At that event, we actually did some giveaways and we had some information on the rack, on the current progress of the rack. We did not share with the community what the fees were because we were bringing those forward to the city council first. And so we did collect a lot of information from, from folks so that we can get the information out to them when we have that readily available. As far as the 14-plus, this is pretty standard in a facility like this. What the philosophy is behind that is that we would allow 14 years and above to come in and use the weight room, and that's why the fee is specific to 14-plus. We have the other fees set up so that they would just use an à la carte, like using the gym or using the aquatic center to, to have those different options for the, the youth in the community. But the fitness center alone would be for ages 14 and up. Another question that you had is for the non-resident rates. Non-resident rates are typically, you know, between $10 and $25 above the normal rate for a non-resident to come in and use a facility such as this. And then your last question that you had was for the San Bruno residents to attend. So in the initial initiation, I'm sorry, implementation plan, there was a, there was a suggestion to have San Bruno residents only for fitness memberships to make sure that we had appropriate, we had enough time for our San Bruno residents. With the, with the way that the, the facility is set up, once you get past that, once you get past that front desk, we have no control mechanisms unless we actually put someone in the different areas of the facility, which will drive up the cost to run, run the facility. Staff recommendation is to not go with that model and to open up a membership to everyone for the different areas of the facility, and then we can monitor that over some time. And if it seems to be an issue, then we can, we can change course on that.
Great, thank you. And if I, if I may, a couple of follow-ups. Is there a family rate? And then is there, what are the options for families that potentially have some financial hardship? hardship? And how are we going to handle that?
Sure. So as far as the family rate goes, our rate system for the 14-plus membership is set up in a way that we would have a first member of the family that's over the age of 14, and then there's an add-on fee for each additional family member over the age of 14. If you have kids under the age of 14, you have the option of doing the punch passes, or you have the daily drop-in fee for those, for those youth that are there. And they, they kind of, you know, equal out, if you look at the actual usage of the, of the punch cards versus the membership, it does, it does even out. As far as a scholarship program, we do have scholarship programs for our, for our, for our classes and our programs. Membership is not something that we've looked into yet, but that is something that we can certainly explore.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. So first, I wanted to just dig a little bit into the methodology that's being used to, to index the, the costs. And if I heard correctly, they're mostly driven by personnel costs, which I'm sure are a huge portion. I know they're a huge portion of our general fund, so I'm sure, I'm sure they're also a huge portion of what we would try to recover. But I'm wondering, do we look at all at any other potential cost increases that the city has that are tied to having a person sit in a building? And there's a lot, you know, we, we don't pay rent, but I know at one point we, we can say, we, we conceptualize the idea of potentially going to a model where we did rent rather than own a building, so that would become a more significant thing. We heard about PG&E rates going up dramatically, and that also factors into what it costs us to keep a person at a desk, fuel costs, if that person needs to drive around to do inspections. So I'm wondering if any of that is considered during the annual exercise or periodically so that we don't fall out of line with, with those other factors?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, the foundation for all fees clearly, perhaps 80 to 90%, and I'm pulling a number out of the air there, is, is, the basis is labor, right? It's the, it's the cost of the individual providing the service. To, to just underscore your comment about personnel costs increasing, we are seeing some considerable increases in the unfunded pension, the minimum payment for unfunded pension liability this year. It's up 25% year-over-year. So that is one factor that contributes to, to the increase on the personnel side. Of course, there are negotiated salaries and benefit changes as well. To the specific question of do we incorporate general overhead costs and adjust those on an annual basis, the answer is no. The, the, the basis to do that is, is typically done as part of the periodic four-to-seven-year review of the study. There's a number of things that, of the fees, there's a number of things that can change operationally, both how, how we provide the service, when we provide the service. Examples may include efficiencies resulting from technology. So there may, you know, I, I think that the prevailing perspective over, on this is that there are both positives and negatives. However, personnel is the single most important, and it's also the single most quantifiable.
Okay. And probably also the one that rarely goes down, it only goes up. Another question around that I had was, when we're factoring in these fees and cost recovery, what percentage of our total personnel cost does this account for? So meaning, do these fees cover 100% of our staff in, in these departments, or is it some portion, does it cover 50%? If we had zero applications come in one year, what, what would be, what would be the deficit from not having the fees?
So it, it depends on the department. The example that you asked, that you gave is the, I'm assuming you're referencing sort of the building planning function. Right now, in the building planning function, as part of the, as part of the $4 million, $4 million deficit, the cost to provide those services, we are, we are able to recover all but $250,000 of, of those, of those costs through fees. In other departments, and, and as I, I would just highlight on that, is that we are the sole provider of land use entitlements. So we have greater, the market is not necessarily the driver, the driver is the costs that we incur to provide the service without, without making, making a profit. In, in other departments, such as community services or the rack, for example, there is a market that, that we're sensitive to and that we're competing against. And in those cases, what we do know is that the rack is, is, and the, the fees are not recovering the cost to operate the facility, which is a key element of our, of our structural deficit that, that we would, that we need to address, and we'll talk a little bit more about in a subsequent, in a subsequent presentation. And I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. To keep kind of going on that same thread, the, the development impact fees, it said in the report, those are pegged to a pretty small construction index compared to everything else, those go up pretty slow. But when, when that NEXUS study was done to develop those impact fees, I think it did include a lot of things like, say, our ability to provide fire services and police services, sewer, water, all those things that go into adding infrastructure, or adding, you know, more capacity to the city, more load on the city. And all of those services have a huge personnel cost. So I'm wondering why we don't consider that when we're ramping those up? Because, I mean, if they really are intended to offset the impact of new development, why wouldn't we include that?
So I'm going to try to take a shot at that one. And, and this year, the, the construction cost index is a very low number, it's under 1%. In the prior years, they were double-digit increases. So it, so, so it, it just appears that it went up a significant amount as the construction costs for materials and labor of such have gone up. This just happens to be a, a, a small increase. As for the details on whether we can put our own information, I believe that, I believe, you know, by ordinance, we're limited to just using that index on that particular set of development impact fees?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I think that answers the question.
Okay. So we would, we would have to do a whole other NEXUS study in order to?
Well, and, good point. And the, one part of the NEXUS study is that it identifies all the things that are needed to be done, for which you calculate what's that cost, where you can then say, okay, per square foot of new things being built, how much is it going to have to pay so that, that the city can, is able, able to pay for that, that cost?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And from the time we did the last NEXUS study, I'm sure that price has changed quite a bit.
One, and I, in, in the near future, we're going to want to do another one, because I think also what we want to, what we believe needs to be on that list of things that need to be done has probably
Changed.
Evolved over time.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Vice Mayor, the one, one other thing I'd add is, impact fees are, are limited to public facilities and not services.
Facilities and not services. Can you elaborate on that?
So an impact fee would be for, to anticipate the cost of sewer improvements that are needed, or parks, or things like that. It wouldn't be for services. I think you were asking if it would include the cost, if we're indexing to, to capture the increased personnel costs in impact fees, but impact fees pay for facilities and wouldn't be paying for services that are rendered by personnel and have those higher personnel costs.
Interesting. I thought it did include, so say, for example, we built a whole bunch of skyscrapers downtown. We're not allowed to charge the developers
Oh, I see.
For the impact of adding new ladder trucks, or maybe
Oh.
More firefighters to have to run in and rescue people?
Not through impact fees.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, thank you. Let's see. And the last question I have was just, do we at any point evaluate the reasonableness of the fees? So some of them, they're, they're set to increase by a certain index, but at, at any point, some of them could become almost unreasonable to the point where nobody will ever want to do something. And I think fireworks is a good example for that, right? Because we, we tie that to a service that we provide, we charge that back to the vendors, but that could eventually become so large that nobody will ever want to sell fireworks because what they have to pay back to the city, it could potentially be more than, than what they're making, right? Because we, we, we charge it, we distribute that cost across them, they pay based on a percentage of their sales, but it could get to the point where either they're making not enough, or it, it's a money loser for them. So, you know, I'm just wondering, do we ever look at the, you know, at how those individual transactions start looking over time when, when these things grow like that?
Vice Mayor, I would, I would say that, again, it depends on the nature of the fee. Is it a, or is it a market fee? Are we competing against another source? Or, or is, or do we have a captive audience, so to speak? And, but fundamentally, the services that we provide cost what they, what they cost, and what the, I think the question that you're raising is a policy consideration by the city council. So staff will bring to you the costs that it, that is incurred to do the, to do the fireworks enforcement. And if the council then decides to use general tax dollars to subsidize that, that's purely a, a council consideration. And it may be in response to feedback that you receive from the community that, that this is becoming on, the, the fees are growing to the point where, where they, it's no longer worth it, so to speak, for them to do the service. But I, I would, fundamentally, that's a policy question, and the, the services cost unfortunately what they cost.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you. And, you know, recently I had a, I had a roof put on my house, and it's been a little over, probably a decade since the last roof got put on. And, you know, the last time it was done, I think the permits were a couple of hundred dollars, and this time they were over $1,000. So it was some sticker shock there. And we had at least one proposal come in where the roofer said, you want it done with or without permits, right? And, and I'm sure a lot of people are going to consider, do I want to pay close to 10% of the cost of this to the city just for somebody to come inspect it, or do I take my chances? So that's what I, I'm kind of getting to the point of where it becomes almost too big of a burden, where you almost create an incentive for people to not do what they should be doing. So that was more of a comment than a question, but thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a grant that we can incorporate to lower the rates for the low-income bracket for a membership fee for the residents?
So I, I don't know specifically about a grant, what I, there are some, there may be some parallels to our utilities, water, wastewater and sewer. There is, you know, again, again, it comes to a policy consideration, is there, is that the desire of the council to subsidize fees based on any host of factors? And so if that, that is the direction, or if that's the, that's the request, then we can explore opportunities to bring that back for your consideration.
Or perhaps some sports and recreation grants for our, our rack, for membership for our upcoming rack. I know that there are some grants that perhaps we can offer to the low-income families to lower the membership fees.
Again, if that's the interest of the council, we can return with those, those ideas.
This is a public hearing, so let's open the public hearing, since we've been talking about this topic, and see if there are any members of the public, please.
I have no speaker cards.
Thank you. So we're going to bring it back to council then, and may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made and seconded to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. On the, the grant I just, the council member was talking about, is, if my memory is correct, I think it was the Atkinson Grant that used to be done. I remember I, I did it when I worked for the city. And it was that folks could come for particular classes, it was more, and I don't know that that grant's probably long gone, but maybe there's something else. And folks mainly would be utilizing it during the summer times for their youth, and then therefore it was gauged on the income, the ask, and what have you, and it was awarded only so much money. But anyway, that was many, many moons ago. Other questions or comments from colleagues at this time? So what I would say is that obviously it is a, a resolution approving an update to the user fee schedule, but also there was other language that was read by the Community Development Director. And I don't know if City Attorney is at okay as was read by Community Services Director?
That is, as long as the city council feels that it's clear on what the motion is.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Can we have him repeat the amended language, just for the, just for the record?
Director?
Thank you. Also, I will reshare the screen so that you can see it as, as well. So, so the recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the user fee schedule update for fiscal year 2425 to go into effect on July 1, except that Chapter 9, which is the Parks and Rec portion of it, will go into effect on May 1st of 2024. And Section 8 of Chapter 9, which is the part that talks about, about the rack fees, is amended to include the following note, that there's a non-resident fee of a $2 additional for all, all, all daily and drop-in fees, and $26 additional for punch passes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's, does anyone want to take action?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
As read by the Community Development Director. Motion made and seconded. Salazar Alvarez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you both for that. I appreciate it. We'll, to Item 8, conduct of business. City Clerk.
Item A, consider new appointments to fill current vacancies on the Crime Prevention Committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Revenue Measure Oversight Committee.
Okay, so just what we'll do is, we'll take, we have a few of the committee commissions or boards. I will announce which one, and then we'll need a motion and a second from anyone to have a person go to the next, and then therefore we will continue that. Once we have no more nominations, then we will go to the list. We will go in order that the clerk will call, and out of those names, the person that you wish you will select. So if there are three names and there's one vacancy, you would select the person that you wish. Does that jog everybody's memory and sound? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. City Clerk, did we do okay? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So why don't we go ahead and start with the Revenue Measurement Oversight? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Marsha Glastrner.
I'll second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for Revenue Measure, Measure Oversight Committee? There is one opening. So I'm hearing no others, so I will go ahead and move that Marsha Glastrner be appointed to the Revenue Measure Oversight.
Chair, if I could just make one comment, I just want to say that there were, across the board, a lot of very
Oh, thank you.
Impressive candidates, and I certainly would have made another nomination had there been another position open. But I, I think Ms. Glastrner did present herself very well, and I think she'd make a good addition.
Is that a second?
That, well, you seconded.
No, I made a motion.
Oh.
I just made a motion to appoint her.
A second then.
Okay. There's a motion made and seconded to appoint Marsha Glastrner to the Rev, Revenue Measure Oversight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Congratulations and thank you, Vice Mayor, for pointing that out. Folks came down on their evening to be interviewed, and we want to thank everybody for stepping forward and wanting to give back. These are, these are volunteer positions to be engaged and give back to the community. These are, uh, these are volunteer positions to be engaged and give back to the community. Okay, with that, we're going to move to, uh, Parks and Recreation will be the next one. And I'd like to make a motion for, um, or nomination, I apologize, for Jennifer Wilson.
I'll second.
Okay. Other nominations, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to nominate Michelle Karanza.
I'll second.
Just writing it down. Okay. Other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we have two candidates. We have Jennifer and we have Michelle. And City Clerk, if you call, roll, and again, you'll make, uh, there's one vacancy, correct?
That's correct.
And so you will select either Jennifer or Michelle.
Councilmember.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. And this is just as our Vice Mayor said, just wanted to stress the, how many qualified people were attempting to get these positions and how none of us take this lightly. And any non, any, any vote or when somebody doesn't get support, does it mean that they were not qualified? I just wanted to stress that it was very, very difficult with the quality of the candidates that we had, or applicants that, uh, applied. So just wanted to make sure that was repeated.
And I think, um, I can take liberty to speak for councilmembers Alvarez and Hamilton that feel, um, very much the same way.
Yeah, I would, uh, just quickly add, especially for Parks and Rec, because we had five applicant, actually eight total applicants and five who interviewed for it, for one position. So it's especially difficult.
Okay. City Clerk?
Councilmember Alvarez?
I nominate Jennifer Wilson.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll nominate Michelle Karanza.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Uh, Michelle Karanza, please.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Jennifer Wilson.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Jennifer Wilson. So we have a 3-2, and for Jennifer Wilson, congratulations, and for Michelle, thank you very much. And as we've all said, thank you to everybody, because there were several applicants for that, it's always very sought after. So, um, with that, let's move on to a Crime Prevention Committee. And how many, uh, vacancies do we have?
We have two open seats.
Okay, we have two seats for crime prevention. Do we have, uh, nominations of, uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to nominate Maria Concha.
I'll second. Okay, others? We have two vacancies.
Applicants.
June Chan?
June Chan? I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to nominate June Chan.
I second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, why don't I make a motion to go ahead and appoint, we have two vacancies, Maria and June, to the, uh, to the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll let you figure that one out, City Clerk. Uh, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passage unanimously. Congratulations. City Clerk, does that conclude us on that topic?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe our City Clerk was going to mention our next rounds of interviews are the vacancies.
No, actually, I was just going to say through the mayor, I have no, um, speaker cards for that item.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much, yes. No, that, we filled them.
Right, but.
Right.
But we currently do not have, um, a set date as to when openings are, but we are definitely always accepting applications and we do keep them on file.
Yes.
As they come in.
Okay.
We saw openings on culture and aren't though, don't we?
So we have not opened that recruitment yet.
Okay.
Okay, everybody? All right, let's move on to, and thank you, uh, City Clerk, about the speaker cards. Study session.
Can we take a quick?
Oh, sorry. Uh, as, as the team comes in, look at this, how they all just walk in, wow, this is impressive. Um, we are going to take a five-minute break so we can, everybody can get assembled and ready and, uh, whatever, so we're going to go into recess for about five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, the city council is, uh, back from recess, and we are currently on item number, we've just concluded eight, we're on item nine, study sessions, which we have two, and if City Clerk can read the first one.
Receive a presentation on the pavement management program.
All right. We have, um, we have assembled what people couldn't see, is all of a sudden a line of, what, three, six folks just came walking in? So they're all seated, uh, to our council's right, and we have to our left, the Director of Public Works, Dirk Lee, would you like to begin?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. Uh, I am truly thrilled, uh, today to welcome my Public Works team to help with this presentation. Uh, they're a host of dedicated individuals that work tirelessly, um, daily, and their expertise and unwavering commitment is what actually helps me get the praise from council. So when you guys actually thank me for everything, it's really all the work that they do behind the scenes. We really talked about the person behind the scenes, uh, with Ms. Blanco earlier, these are the people behind the scenes for paving. Uh, they're not just only people that work on paving, they work on everything else, too. But today, we're going to focus on a subset of, of the work that they do. Like I said, I'm incredibly proud of this team. Their hard work and innovation, innovative solutions are crucial to the services we provide, and tonight, um, they're here to share their knowledge with you. As I mentioned, the first time I ever approached the dais and I was asked, what was my impression after 100 days of, of the, of the Public Works team? And, and I said something to the fact that, you know, we have a very dedicated Public Works team, right? They're often not seen for the work that they do, but only for the work that isn't done, right? And oftentimes, there's a reason for why things are not done yet, and it's very rarely the initial reason people often think that it is. And so today, um, this presentation hopefully answers the question, why is my street not being paved? Um, it is important to understand the complexity behind what we might see as a straightforward question, but this presentation will lead us to some non-intuitive answers, uh, shedding light on the intricacies and the logic of our decision-making process. We make it a practice to responsibly manage our resources, and we strive to avoid utilizing general fund money for pavement projects. Measure G has helped us in this regard, uh, to add it with additional local funding. This is part of our commitment to sustainable financial planning and ensuring that our city's infrastructure is maintained without compromising our fiscal health. I want to set your expectations tonight. We love paving. Because we love paving, and you've heard me mention that before, you're in for a very thorough presentation, uh, not just in time, but in detail and breadth. Um, the processes you will learn tonight are driven by as much science as it is by art. Uh, our team has worked meticulously to blend technical precision and creative solutions. And it's important for our community to understand that there is a sophisticated and nuanced process that goes into paving a street. It's much more complex than just dumping asphalt. It involves detail, uh, detailed thoughtful approach, uh, for every road and every project. Moreover, this presentation is actually pretty timely, um, as we approach the launch of a community polling effort by Godbe Research that will inform a formation of a revenue measures, uh, that, uh, were sent out starting this Monday, which includes considerations for streets and roads. This measure is essential if we want to look at additional funding to keep our street networks safe, functional, and working. Understanding that the work that we do is crucial empowers everyone as a community, as community members, to see the value in every project and decision we make. So as we proceed, I invite you to engage, but hold your questions until the end of the presentation, and think about how each piece of information presented tonight impacts not just your street, but the street within your community. With that, I'm excited, uh, for you to see a little of what goes behind the scenes to us maintaining our streets, and I appreciate the hard work and dedication of our Public Works team. And with that, I pass the mic to Haywon, our Deputy Director of Public Works, to start the presentation.
Uh, thank you, Dirk Lee, for those comments and, and acknowledging the team. And, uh, also, I did go and I asked, and yes, uh, council questions, uh, would be very much appreciated if we can contain them until the end of the presentation. Uh, Deputy Director feels that, uh, some of those answers may come through this, uh, detailed presentation. So with that, please.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Haywon Ritchie. I'm your City Engineer and Deputy Director of Public Works. Um, I'm really happy to be here tonight to provide you with a comprehensive review and update to our paving program. Um, we have our paving program team represented here tonight. Dahlia, who is the Principal Civil Engineer, uh, is also shown on this first slide, will be providing the bulk of the slides. Um, I'll be presenting the first several slides and then handing off to the team for the subject matter detailed slides. What we hope to convey to you tonight is the team before you is passionate about paving. This is a comprehensive presentation that provides a thorough review on a dense subject. I'll start with an introduction of the paving program and team. Our Streets and Stormwater Manager will present the pothole program. The Pavement CIP Team, led by Dahlia, will present on the Pavement Management Program, Street Selection Methodology, Budget Scenarios, Five-Year CIP Paving Program. We will then provide an update and preview of the website development and end with a summary. So the paving program is all comprehensive. It starts from the front lines of when a resident calls regarding a localized pothole repair requested for patching, to planning, design, and construction of multimillion-dollar construction projects. They are all important, important components to maintaining the city's pavement infrastructure. Our dedication is real, and we hope that comes across. In fact... We love paving. So I'm really excited to introduce the San Bruno Paving Team. I believe you will find the team to be extremely hardworking, passionate about producing high-quality work, and of the highest integrity. They are truly dedicated to doing what is best for San Bruno and its residents. These are really good people who truly care, and I can genuinely say that they are an amazing group of individuals. In fact, half of the team actually are also residents of San Bruno. I've introduced myself already. Dahlia Manaus is the city's Principal Civil Engineer for Capital Improvements. Her shop delivers CIP projects, and she'll be presenting the bulk of this presentation. Jake Zhang and Calvin Yuan, who are Assistant Engineers and Project Managers, are part of the CIP Division, working to deliver the slurry seal projects, street rehabilitation, and street reconstruction projects. Anna Morales, who's a Management Analyst 2, uh, isn't, we're, uh, a Management Analyst 2. If you've ever interacted with her, you would know that she is a bright, capable, and very pleasant person. She will discuss the paving program website update and development. Gina Quinn, who you might also recognize as the city's Streets and Stormwater Gino Quinn, who you might also recognize as the city's Streets and Stormwater Manager. You can tell no matter what he does, it will be the best quality of work because that's what he demands of himself, and that care and dedication just permeates to others. So I would like to first start off by handing off the presentation to Gino. He manages the pothole program, which provides immediate response when a call comes in about a pothole.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. My name is Gino Quinn, and I am the Streets and Stormwater Services Manager. Having grown up in San Bruno, going to school here, and living here with my family, I consider San Bruno my own, and that's what drives me in doing the work that we do. I know that our work not only benefits our citizens, but it also benefits me directly. As I drive through our city in my personal time, it's virtually impossible for me to turn my radar off, if you will. I'm constantly keeping watch on how I can help make San Bruno a better place for us all to live. One of the things that I'm most attentive to in my travels is our roadway condition, specifically as it relates to potholes. Our Streets Division allocates a significant amount of resources each year to patching potholes throughout the city. The majority of the potholes are crewed patch or deep potholes that can be repaired using either cold asphalt patch, which is ready-made and stored in bulk, or hot mix asphalt, which is prepared at the time of purchase from local plants. We also encounter shallow potholes, which are generally repaired using small aggregate hot asphalt mix, as cold asphalt patch doesn't adhere well to existing pavement in shallow conditions. While patching potholes is often viewed as a temporary means of repair, it's a valuable maintenance measure which helps to slow or halt further pavement damage, extending pavement life between large-scale pavement repair or rehabilitation events. After years of documenting pothole patch requests on paperwork orders, city staff has begun to digitize our pothole patching program through development of a custom in-house pothole program, which we call Pothole Tracker. Pothole Tracker allows us to document and geo-reference locations of potholes, track both completed and ongoing repairs, identify areas of frequent pothole occurrence, and calculate annual output, material amount, and cost. As city staff continue to develop the Pothole Tracker program, we look forward to integrating it into our computerized maintenance work order system, so that requests and repairs can be viewed by the public in real time via the city's website. Maintenance crews don't only utilize Pothole Tracker for tracking repairs related to requests, but also add repairs as they identify and perform them in the field. For example, crews recently filled over 100 potholes on Fleetwood Drive. Some of the potholes they filled were directly referenced by the public, but the crews did not limit their repair work to public requests. We look at the information contained in Pothole Tracker as a foundation for paving. Just as city staff has worked to improve the way that we track and respond to pothole issues, staff has also looked at ways to increase output and efficiency through the use of new materials, methods, and equipment. In 2021, City Council approved the purchase of a pothole patch truck, which was made possible through funding by Measure G. Unfortunately, vehicle and material shortages due to the COVID-19 pandemic have delayed our receipt of the truck. However, it's currently in production, and we anticipate its arrival by winter. The Pothole Patch Truck is an all-in-one pothole patching vehicle manufactured by the PBD Loader Corporation, and has the ability to carry 1.8 tons of hot mix asphalt, as well as all the tools necessary to perform lasting pothole patchwork while utilizing a crew of only two. Historically, patching potholes with small aggregate hot asphalt mix, which we call sheet asphalt, has been a somewhat challenging endeavor. First off, crews have to purchase sheet asphalt in quantities greater than needed in order to keep the product hot and usable for the day. Second, we've experienced difficulties, especially lately, in procuring material due to competition with large-scale pavement projects at SFO, as well as various pavement projects that are underway in surrounding municipalities, including our own. These issues will be diminished using the Pothole Patch Truck, as the material hopper in the truck is heated, allowing us the ability to keep the hot asphalt we purchase warm during the day and even overnight. This will allow us to travel further, if needed, to purchase hot asphalt and ensure that we utilize more of the material that we purchase for pothole patching, so less goes to waste. Through utilization of the Pothole Patching Truck, we anticipate not only an increase in the number of annual pothole repairs performed by our maintenance crew, but a shift in balance from a historically reactive dominant maintenance response to more of a proactive maintenance response. Now I'll pass the mic to Dahlia.
Thank you, Gino. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Dahlia Manaus, and I am the Principal Engineer with Public Works. And I'm very pleased and honored to have this opportunity to provide an overview and the updates of the pavement management program that your paving team has been working so diligently on to improve the city's streets in San Bruno. I would like to start with talking about the StreetSaver database program. The StreetSaver is a decision-supporting tool cities use to help make cost-effective decisions. It answers four main questions: What does the city own and maintain? What condition is it in? What repairs are needed and when? And how much is required to maintain or improve streets cost-effectively? We do not solely rely on the output report of StreetSaver. We take into consideration a number of factors, in which we will be getting into the details later on in this presentation. The StreetSaver program is required by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC, to be eligible for regional funds and federal funds, and it is updated every two years through the MTC's Pavement Technical Assistance Program. And I'll go ahead and pass this over to Calvin Ywan, who will be talking about, I'm sorry, to Jake Zhang, who will be talking about the pavement distress types.
Thank you, Dahlia. Good evening, everyone, Mayor Medina and City Council Members. My name is Jake Zhang, Assistant Engineer with Public Works. I will be introducing various types of pavement distresses that can be visually observed during condition assessment. And here are the pictures of the distresses. The first one we have is block cracking. Block cracking forms in a pattern resembling large blocks or squares on the pavement surface. The one right next to us is rotting. Rotting happens when pavement develops depressions or cracks caused by heavy traffic or poor drainage. The third one is distortions. It's usually referred to irregularities, or uneven in the pavement surface, such as dips, bumps, or waves. And the last one we have on this slide is the longitudinal or transverse cracking, which run parallel to the direction of traffic flow to across the road width. Next slide, please. And here are three more distresses that I'm going to talk about. The first one we have is weathering and raveling. Weathering occurs when pavement surface deteriorates due to exposure to the weather conditions, like rain, sunlight, or freestyle cycles. Raveling refers to the loss of pavement surface and material resulting in a rough or gravelly texture. Patches, patches are areas where repairs have been made to the pavement surface. And lastly, we have alligator cracking. This type of cracking resembles the skin of an alligator with interconnected cracks forming a pattern of small, irregular shapes, and indicates severe pavement distress. Now, I will hand this off to Calvin Ywan to talk about treatment options. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Good evening, everyone, Mayor Medina and members of City Council. My name is Calvin Ywan. I'm an Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department. And like my counterpart, Gino, I am a San Bruno resident as well, and I do care about our streets. I'll be providing some examples of different types of treatments. There are many different treatments, types of treatments, but we'll be going over some So slurry seal, slurry seals are effective, cost-efficient treatments to keep streets in good condition. A slurry seal is an example of a preventative maintenance treatment where a thin layer is spread over the pavement. You can think of a slurry seal like applying sunscreen to your skin. Just as sunscreen protects your skin from the sun, a slurry seal shields the road from the weather and traffic damage. It's a proactive way to maintain the road's health and prolonging its lifespan. So asphalt concrete overlay places new asphalt on top of the old road, fixes cracks and bumps on the surface, and makes the road smoother. An analogy for pavement overlays is like giving an old shoe new soles, just as putting on new soles can make old shoes last longer and feel better. Overlaying a road surface freshes it, making it stronger and more protective. Just as new soles cover worn areas and provide better grip, an overlay covers cracks and damages on the road, making it look better. In both cases, the aim is to make something worn out stronger and more usable. Mill and fill, milling removes the old road surface and fills in any holes or cracks and applies new asphalt to the top. It's like replacing worn-out carpet with new carpet. Cold-in-place recycling fixes a road with a special recycling machine that grinds up the old surface and reuses the same material to create a new road surface. This method is considered green because it recycles and reuses existing pavement. It's like making a fresh batch of dough using some old dough and adding new ingredients to make it tasty again. And reconstruction treatment, builds a brand-new road from scratch, where construction tears out the old road completely, then builds a new road from the ground up. It's like demolishing an old house and building a new one in its place. And now I'll pass it back to Dahlia. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Now let's get into the question, what is pavement condition index, or PCI? The PCI is a calculated value that considers pavement distresses. It ranges from zero to 100, 100 being a brand-new street. It is not a drivability index, so a pavement with a PCI of zero can still be driven on, it just would feel a bit uncomfortable and possibly a little bit bumpy. And here you see the breakpoints and descriptors. We have a PCI of 100 to 90 would be in excellent condition, and this would be a newly-built or resurfaced street, as you see here in the right, with no signs of distress. Then we have the PCI in good condition, which would be 89 to 70. In fair condition would have a PCI of 69 to 50. Here you could see signs of wear and tear, cracks, minor surface deterioration, and the ride can be relatively smooth. Next, we have the poor condition with a PCI of 49 to 25. You'll see significant signs of wear and damage, cracks, potholes, rough patches, and uneven surfaces, and the road may seem a little bit bumpy when driven on. Last, we have the failed condition with a PCI of 24 or less. Here, the photo you see shows severe distresses with block cracking, alligator cracking, raveling. Driving on a failed street can be considered very uncomfortable and bumpy. The overall PCI in San Bruno, and so this is the average PCI, is 63. So we are at the fair condition. Now let's focus on the overall network. The overall street network PCI as of 2024 is 63. So this means the average PCI of all the streets in San Bruno is 63. There are three types of streets. We have arterial, collector, and residential streets. So the residential local streets are streets where residents would travel on within their neighborhoods to travel towards their home, access to their homes. When leaving, they would travel back onto the residential local street, onto the collector street, which will then feed onto a major street, also considered an arterial street, with access to the freeways. So the average PCI, the average PCI is 69, and this is the average PCI of all the arterials in San Bruno. So here you see an example of an arterial street, which is San Bruno Avenue, where cars would travel outside of the city or to other major parts in the city or the freeway. Another example of an arterial street would be Snead Lane. And then you have the average PCI of all the collector streets in the city is 67. And here's an example of a collector street, which is Huntington Avenue. The average PCI of all the residential streets in San Bruno is 59. An example of a residential street would be Acacia Avenue, Elm Avenue, typically where travelers would travel onto their homes. Let's talk about the overall street network by percentages. So 16% of the overall street is in excellent condition, with 33% in good condition, 20% in fair condition, 21% in poor condition, and 10% in the failed condition. And here is a visual representation of the condition of the streets, remaining consistent with blue being excellent to red being failed. So there are a fair number of blue streets here, and this is a direct result of all the paving work that you've seen around town within the past couple of years. A question that we get a lot is, why is my street not being paved? So before we address this question, let's talk about the pavement deterioration curve. So here we have a curve, the X or vertical axis is the PCI, from zero at the bottom to 100 at top, which would be a brand-new street. And then in the X-axis or the horizontal axis, we have time and years. We have the dashed red line, which represents the original condition of a perfect street with a PCI of 100. And then we have the red solid line, which represents the PCI in terms of time. So when we have a street that has been newly paved, the PCI is at 100. This street is in the blue stage. This blue stage is the good stage. Things may seem fine, this is where you will see minimal distresses. However, it is important to apply preventive maintenance while the street is in this condition. Preventive maintenance is a very cost-effective maintenance to keep streets in good condition. It is a low cost of approximately $2 to $3 per square foot. Now if we don't apply any preventive maintenance, what will happen is the PCI will enter into the orange stage here, where the rate of deterioration, it's a rapid rate of deterioration. So here, if we were to apply a rehabilitation treatment, such as, for an example, there are many different types of treatments, but for the purpose of this presentation, we'll use the overlay or a milling fill. To apply a rehabilitation overlay or milling fill, the cost would be approximately $11 to $20 per square foot. So this would be approximately 10 times greater than applying a preventive maintenance. If we wait further and don't apply any repair or treatment, and we get into the yellow zone, so this is the failed zone, where a reconstruction treatment would cost the highest, at about $32 to $40 per square foot. And so this is about 20 times the cost of applying a preventive maintenance treatment. So this is not where we want to be. Where we want to be is, we want to allow our streets to remain in the blue stage. And how do we do this? So at about seven to eight years, the idea is to apply a preventive maintenance treatment such as slurry seal. And once that is done, you see the green line here, the green curve. So once you apply a pavement maintenance treatment, the PCI will increase to a little less than 100. Okay, so then move time forward, it'll dip a little, and then this is where we want to continue with this cycle of applying preventive maintenance treatment. of applying preventive maintenance treatment. And by doing this, the PCI will then again be elevated to close to 100 and remain in good condition. So this is the type of curve that we want to see to keep our streets in good condition at a low cost. So now we'll get into the question, why is my street not being paved? When wondering why your street isn't being paved, it is important to understand that the pavement management program focuses on the overall network when making pavement decisions. While your street may be in poor condition, the PMP also considers street in good condition that are at risk of deteriorating without preventive maintenance. These streets receive less expensive treatments like slurry seal to prevent them from slipping into the poor condition in yellow, which would require more costly repairs. If the PMP were to prioritize reconstructing this one failed street, there might not be enough funds left for preventive maintenance. This could lead to more streets deteriorating, causing greater costs in the long run. Ultimately, the PMP must prioritize paving projects based on what will benefit the entire community the most with the available budget. This ensures that limited resources are used effectively to maintain and improve the road network for the benefit of all residents. So now another question is, when do we invest in the failed streets? And are we ever going to get to the failed streets? Proactively, the PMP maintains as much as possible, and when funding is increased, there is more capacity to get to the failed streets. Now let's talk about numbers. So the cost for a typical city block, 1,000 linear feet long by 40 feet wide, a pavement condition in good to excellent with a PCI range of 70 and above, would receive a preventive maintenance treatment such as a slurry seal. So the cost would be approximately $80,000 to maintain this street and keep it in good condition. If we do not apply preventive maintenance treatment, it will fall into the poor to fair category with a PCI range to 25 to 69. And so an example of a rehabilitation treatment would be an overlay or a milling fill, and this is based on several factors that includes pavement analysis. But we're just using it as an example, an overlay. The approximate cost would be $480,000. So this cost is about 10 times greater than the cost of a preventive maintenance treatment. Then if we continue to do nothing and allow it to fail into the failed category, the PCI range of 0 to 24, a reconstruction treatment would cost approximately $1.3 million. And so this would be 20 times the cost of applying a preventive maintenance treatment. So the message that we're trying to deliver here is, let's keep the streets in good condition, in good condition, so that we don't have to allow the streets to fail into the failed condition where a more costly treatment would be required. How does San Bruno fare compared to the cities in San Mateo County? So this information was provided by MTC as of 2022. The chart shows cities with the lowest PCI on the left to the highest PCI towards the right. San Bruno falls more towards the left or below PCI medium due to various reasons that include less budget prior to the approval of the Measure G funds, limited maintenance activities, staff shortages and turnover, and other factors associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. What is the PCI of a city or town with similar lane miles? We have Pacifica with an average PCI of 43 and a five-year pavement budget of about $3.6 million from 2018 to 2022. We have San Bruno with an average PCI of 62 and a five-year budget of $8.2 million. And then the town of Hillsborough with an average PCI of 79, which is in good condition, and a five-year paving budget of $6 million. So this means, what we're trying to show here is that the cost to maintain streets in good condition requires less expensive treatments to keep them in good shape. Let's talk about the potential funding sources. We have the gas tax and Senate Bill 1, Road Maintenance and Recovery Act. These tax revenues are received from the state. The SB 1 Road Maintenance and Recovery Act funds come from gas on tax, diesel, and vehicle registration fees in California. Then we have Measure A and Measure W, which are San Mateo County voter-approved sales tax measures. And then finally, we have Measure G, which is a San Bruno voter-approved local tax measure. So here is a chart of the pavement management program funds spent in the last five years. From 2019 to 20, we spent a total of $1.1 million. And it looks like here the bulk of the funding came from SB 1 RMRA funds. The fiscal year 2020 to 2021, a total of $1.9 million was spent. And similarly here, the SB 1 and RMRA is the majority source that funded the budget for that year, or the expenditures for that year. And then in 2021 to 22, we spent approximately $1.35 million. And then in 2022 to 23, we spent approximately $8 million. And here you can see a big portion of the funds spent came from Measure G funds. This fiscal year 23, 24, we are still in the middle of the fiscal year or towards the end, and we've spent as of this date around $5.2 million. And again, here shows the bulk of the revenues or the funding came from Measure G funds. So what have we been doing in the last five years? We completed the 2022-23 Slurry Seal Project. We have the 22-23 Street Rehabilitation Project, which is in progress. And in the next couple of years, we'll have three projects: one street reconstruction project, one street rehabilitation project, and one street slurry seal project. And the total center lane miles of improvement is about 20 center lane miles of improvement, with the total budget of approximately $21.5 million. Here's a map of the streets that were completed as part of the 2022-23 Slurry Seal Project. And here is a map of the street rehabilitation project currently in progress. And here is a map of the future streets. We have the streets in teal, which is the reconstruction project. The streets colored in blue is part of the street rehabilitation project. And the streets in purple represent the slurry seal project. Here is a map of the PCI condition in 2019. If you take a look at the colors, we've remained consistent with the pavement condition, with excellent being in blue and the failed conditions in red. So there are not too many blue or excellent streets in this 2019 map. Fast forward to today, and you will see that there are a fair amount of blues that you could see in excellent condition. And this is a direct result of the paving projects that you've seen around town within the past couple of years. So the pavement management program is doing a lot of good work and improving our streets to excellent condition. Let's go on to the street selection methodology. Payment conditions are assessed using Streetsaver, identifying streets in need of attention alongside budget constraints. Other considerations include coordinating with CIP and development projects, alignment with planned city projects, avoids duplication, and maximizes resource use. Seeking grant funds, we look for grants to add to our paving budget and focus on eligible streets. Other types of grants can also cover various infrastructure projects, like improving underground utilities. By coordinating paving and utility work, we improve infrastructure more efficiently. Or sometimes, streets in good shape get repaved as part of a bigger project funded by grants, like the Cycle Track project on Huntington Avenue. Grouping similar projects, streets with similar needs are grouped together for efficiency in treatment. And choosing nearby streets, selections of streets in close proximity minimizes logistics and costs. This methodology aims to pave streets effectively while addressing community needs and promoting fairness. And then we have considering economy. When selecting streets, we need to consider the economy. Changes in construction labor costs and material expenses may require us to adjust our plans and possibly remove some street segments to stay within budget. Understanding the bidding environment is essential for successful project execution as it helps us make informed decisions and manage budget effectively. Considering regulations, all paving projects adhere to relevant rules and laws, meeting legal and environmental standards such as stormwater permitting requirements and ADA mandates. This ensures project compliance and avoids potential fines or delays. It's important to note that the new municipal regional permit, also known as MRP 3.0, requirements and ADA accessible ramp upgrades can increase costs for pavement projects, resulting in the possibility of reducing the scope or number of streets in a paving project. MRP requirements may be triggered by certain types of paving projects, such as those that replace more than one acre of contiguous road reconstruction projects or replaces more than 5,000 square feet down-to-base course of impervious area. Pavement overlays and preventive maintenance remain exempt. ADA upgrades are triggered by reconstruction and rehabilitation projects that include overlay, milling, fill, and curb ramps can cost sometimes up to $5,000 to $10,000 per ramp. Considering equity, the street selection process now includes a new component focusing on equity. This ensures that areas with historically disadvantaged communities receive priority for pavement maintenance and repairs. Starting in next year's paving plan, Streetsaver will consider equity more heavily than non-disadvantaged communities when choosing streets for improvement. Specifically, it will use the SB 535 Disadvantaged Communities map to identify areas in need of priority pavement improvements. Next, we'll go on to three budget scenarios. The first scenario maintains the PCI currently at 63. In order for the program to maintain the current PCI, a total of $5 million on average per year for the next five years would be needed. To improve the PCI to good condition, 71, the program would need approximately $7 million every year for the next five years. And to improve the PCI to 80, the program will need approximately $12 million every year for the next five years. Here is a visual representation of what can be done with a budget of $5 million per year, and this will maintain the PCI at 63. So here you have the streets in green, which represent streets that will be improved by using the potential funding sources. And then you see the streets in purple. These streets represent improvements as part of the sewer and water replacement projects, also known as the avenues projects. So this map shows what the pavement management program can maintain and repair with a $5 million per year funding budget for the next five years. With a funding budget of $7 million per year for the next five years, this would increase the overall PCI to good condition, 71. And this map represents the streets that can be addressed with that budget. Increase the budget to $12 million per year for the next five years would increase the PCI to 80. And here you see the streets that can be addressed with those funds. And next, I would like to pass this over to Anna to talk about the website development. Anna?
Thank you, Dahlia. Good evening, I'm Anna Morales, Management Analyst with Public Works. So to increase transparency and keep the community engaged with all the work we're doing for our paving program, we're currently working on a webpage that will bring you a variety of resources on all things paving. The webpage is currently in the developmental stage, but is set to launch soon. And here is a preview of what it will look like. The goal of the page is to share various paving resources with the community, including our five-year plan, projects in progress, completed projects, the pothole program, frequently asked questions, resources including pictures and videos such as tonight's presentation, and community feedback. And I'll pass it back to Dahlia.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, so now to wrap up all the exciting updates from today's presentation, we've covered the highlights of the pavement management program and the incredible progress we're making with the funds we have. We're passionate about paving, and as Matt and Heewan mentioned, we love to pave. Our goal to elevate our average PCI to ensure our entire network is in the overall good condition. By improving the PCI, we'll enhance safety, promote long-term savings, and boost community pride. I wanted to acknowledge our amazing new paving team, who not only worked hard to improve the streets in San Bruno, but we are also part of this community, and we're proud members of this wonderful San Bruno community. We also wanted to thank the residents of San Bruno for making progress happen and approving the Measure G funds. And so with that, we would like to say, let's pave the way to a smoother, safer, and more vibrant San Bruno together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything directly to finish with, or?
Like I said, I told you, we love paving. So we're open to any questions that you may have on the presentation or on any other paving topics.
Okay, so we have our new PAP, Passion About Paving. So I'm going to just take it out of turn just to see if there's any members of the public that wanted to speak on this item just because of the hour getting later.
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, so then we'll go back to council, and I would say, let's just take questions, comments, et cetera. But as we embark up here, I just want to thank all of you, A) for being here and staying with us, because I know it's later and there's work tomorrow. But I appreciate everybody being here, and I think truly what you've done is given a lot of detail, which is helpful to us and to the public and the website and what we're going to be doing, and to try to help categorize that. And I think that's what people have been looking for, is help me understand the process, help me understand those nuances. And again, the question that we all get is, what about my street and the condition? So thank you very much. And with that, I'll open it up to colleagues, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you so much for this presentation. This was great. As the mayor said, it's probably the number-one question that we get. And really, this information is going to be super helpful to the community because people don't always understand the triage process that you need to go through to make sure that, you know... Unfortunately, some streets are so bad that it's not worth fixing right now so that we don't let other streets get that bad. So I do have a couple of questions. First one is, do you love paving? No, I'm sorry. My actual first question is, going back to the beginning when we were talking about potholes. When a resident reports a pothole through the SB Responds app, which is what we're encouraging everybody to do, and I can say from experience, it works, that's the best way to get something into the system. So when that report happens, does that show up in the pothole tracker automatically? So when that report happens, does that show up in the pothole tracker automatically? Does it go through some human vetting first? What is that process?
Through the chair, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. So like Gino mentioned earlier, this is a one-of-a-kind, homegrown pothole tracker program. We're currently in the process of trying to align that with our CMMS system so that it automates it. Currently, it does not. It actually takes a lot of time to make that automation happen.
Sure.
I always joke with my team that Twitter is only, what, 140 characters, and they have like 9,000 people working for them? And we're trying to connect two systems with two people, right? And maybe an army of consultants. So it's going to take a little bit of time. But our goal is to ultimately make it seamless so that it could, like Gino said, work in real time. Currently, right now, what we do is we have a process that is still manual. We convert it from the CMS system to the pothole tracker. The reason why we created this pothole tracker is because we don't just get calls and requests to fix potholes through SB Responds. We get phone calls, we get people that stop us in the street, we get people that have someone else and come tell us about it. And so, you know, we do encourage that people go through SB Responds because it's easier for us to track, but we try to take it every which way. And so that's why we have this pothole tracker to hopefully consolidate all the requests into one spot. And so we're working diligently on that, and the goal is to have all of it be automated and seamless.
Great, thank you. And then we saw slides on the pavement management program funds spent. And I know that, so the forward-looking budget, obviously, it's hard to actually predict, and obviously, we're going to go through the budgeting process, and I love seeing the effect that different funding levels will give. But just, it's safe to say that our budget for the next five-year cycle, as we're looking ahead, is going to be historically, you know, larger than it has been in recent history. It seems that way, but is it just completely impossible to predict?
And why don't we, if okay, Director Lee, we'll kind of funnel them through you, and you can go where you want. Of course, City Manager should come in at any time, but just so we kind of have.
Yeah, so, great question. I will pass that on to City Manager McIntyre, because he's way more eloquent than I am in answering this question.
No, I mean, I'm not sure I'm more eloquent, because, you know, no is no. And the concern I have, and as we've talked about next year's budget, is some of the structural challenges we have, right? You know, we've made an incredible dent in the, not a dent, a massive increase in our investment in the road system in the past two years, which is fantastic. You know, the real question is, can Measure G continue to support that? Will the pressures on Measure G become different through time? We don't know for the moment. I think the message here for the council and for the community is, we need to keep up our level of investment to keep our road system healthy. But with limited funds, we got to really test ourselves on which, what's the greatest priority for the moment? And I think you'll see, historically, we just didn't have the money for streets and roads. And you could saw, I think on the five-year slide, you saw about a million dollars a year being spent, and then the last couple of years was the big jump. And again, if I have my numbers wrong, it's order of magnitude, certainly. So, you know, it's going to be the council policy and the council question. You know, the hope is that we're going to be able to either expend the existing funds we have, or if there's a new funding source, we discover. But that's to be determined still.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, team. We welcome you. Thank you for that extensive presentation. I have a few questions, and I will circle around the failed category of your presentation. Given the amount that we would have to allocate to take care of the failed streets, I didn't see that being considered in the program, only the improvement. And my next question, actually, my first question is, if we fix the failed street, do we bring it to the excellent condition? And if we do, how many years would that take to, well, not necessarily maintain, but to stay that way, and then go to that maintenance program? The reason why I ask is, looking at the sample in your presentation, the Highland Street, where my district is, it's considered to be under the failed street. Given that it's only 10%, and it's not considered in, or taken into consideration to be fixed because of maybe the cost, when do we lower that 10%? I mean, how often do we consider pulling that failed street to be fixed? That's one of the questions.
Councilmember, through the chair, Councilmember Alvarez, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. Excellent question. I think we get this question all the time with staff, and it's kind of a derivative of, why is my street not being paved? In an attempt to understand it, so I really appreciate you asking that question. What I will attempt to answer is kind of the thought process that goes through this, right, which we talked about is half art and half science. So the common thread is, well, if my street has failed, why don't you fix my street and bring it to 100? And that way, it will increase the overall network's PCI. But as we know, the cost of the streets are 40 times more than maintaining the other streets, right? And so if we do one street, there could be 39 other streets that we may not store or seal that will eventually get down to that point. And so if we look at it from an individual standpoint of the actual street itself, then that makes sense, right? If we look at it with a narrow prism of my street. But if we look at it for the community as a whole, and we take a step back, we're looking at the entire network. Now, I think people hear that, and they're like, well, then you're never going to pave my street. That's not absolutely true. We do tweak the system to make sure we do address failed streets. We do work on them. That's called the SB1 funds. And if the council members that were on the dais back in 2017, we even developed a methodology of how we would prioritize that. And so we do work on failed streets. It's just, you need more funding to be able to work on more failed streets, right? And so the decision for us, from our professional opinion, it is not prudent use of fiscal, of the city's fiscal revenues to be able to focus only on failed streets, because as we see in the presentation, we're not helping the entire network. The more streets are going to fail, and we're going to be back to where we are. I think there was a slide that talked about the three cities and how they applied their funds. If you look, cities with a higher PCI, they're able to maintain it for less. We want to get to that point. That's the sweet spot, right? And that's where it's the art and the science and the complicated graph with the multiple colors. Like, I can get into that all night, right? But we really try to boil it down to its essence so we understand the crux of the issue, right? And the crux of the issue is that we want to keep our good streets good, and so that we can have funding to work on the failed streets. And that's counterintuitive, because in people's minds, they're like, just work on the failed street first. But if you take a broader view, a 90,000-feet view, that's not actually the better and more efficient approach.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the explanation, and I think I understand the methodology. It's just, if our residents in that particular district will wait more than 20 years, would that be considerable to say that, okay, we want to maintain our street and not spend so much money, but, and then, because we don't have that budget to spend 1.3 million, that particular district or where that failed street is would have to wait more than 20 years?
The answer is, it's depending on the amount of funding that goes to the network, right? So if we spend a million a year, and I, we can cite the dollar amount of what it takes to replace all our streets, there is a possibility we don't pave that road for more than 20 years. But if we actually invest in our infrastructure, because transportation is very vital to our community, and the streets are really actually really important, right, and people don't realize them until they fail, we probably should, if we can put more funds into it, we can get it every 20 years, if that is our goal. Like I've said, and my staff have said, we love paving. If you allow us the opportunity to pave, we will pave. I love the smell of asphalt. It's just inherent in me, and that's weird, right? But I do like the smell of asphalt, and it's probably cancerous, who knows? But I would just say that, you know, to answer your question in a more serious term, as long as we apply funding to it, the system will allow us to address the streets. And that's a challenge that every community has, right, is balancing what their priorities are and what they can put on local streets and roads based on the availability of revenues that they have.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, we all love paving. And I guess what this reminds me of is, until you really, until we as a community understand the problem of the cost that we have in paving, the condition that our streets are in, the amount of money that it's going to take, the time it's going to take, and then the natural degradation of a road when you don't take care of it. That one graph or the one slide where we were spending 1 million to 2 million a year. And in those years, your roads degrade much more. So it's amazing to see that the amount of work that has been done, the amount of money that has been spent, but the rate that the cost of paving has gone up to, I would guess it's probably close to 20%, 30% in those five years. But that's not the question yet. The issue is, to our residents, for them to understand, they still don't have an answer. When is my street going to get paved? And it's like, well, it depends on the money and all these things. And so I think a little additional analysis needs to be done to look at the cost of our worst streets. Just to do our worst streets is probably some insane number, because the cost of those repairs for a street that has totally failed and it has to be totally redone is substantially more expensive. So I'm not asking you to do that now, but I think at some point that we have to have this discussion so we can have a better chance of answering the question to whomever it is. Based on your street's condition now, and it's at a 58, which is decent, not great, if we don't get to that street and do any preventive maintenance on it in the next six years, it's going to go down to a 46 or whatever number that is. And if we don't do anything else on that, it will get in that poor range. So we really are just starting to spend the money it takes, but the reality is, we're in a deep rut, and the cost to keep on going forward will only increase. So we don't have yet have an answer for our community to be able to say, it's going to take X years. But we can, we have to be able to help them to understand that, given this additional money, you have to kind of, I think at some point, say, to a homeowner that lives on whatever street it is, by a certain date at this rate, it will take X amount of years, the way we're going. So I wanted to also commend the staff for what they're doing with the potholes. And I think what wasn't captured in the presentation is the reality of the street that has those potholes, and that is going to be, there's going to be some water main replacement on that street. That's going to take a little bit longer for us to wait for that project to get installed so that we can repave the street. And there was a lot of blue in the avenues, and that's the district I'm in, and it's not because of anything I did. It was because that the degradation of our water and sewer system was failing so much that they had to fix the worst spots, and that happened to be in our oldest part of town. So I know it's late tonight, and I think at some point to have an additional information about the reality of the cost and looking into it, and what are we going to do as a council in asking our community to provide a little bit more faith in us that we're going to actually maintain the streets even better? And that's going to require the trust, the revenue source, and the support of our voters. So we need to, I think, get those things together so that we will be having this better understanding of what, all the good work you want to do and how we're going to fund it. And without the funding, then it's just going to degrade, and it's just going to get more expensive every single year. Every single thing gets more expensive. So my question, that I know we did some cold recycling up in Crestmore during, in the explosion areas, and how well did that work for us? That was the first time I believe that we did it. And is there plans on doing that? Is that part of the toolkit that staff is looking at? Because we haven't seen that type of project yet, that I'm aware of, since we did it the first time. And so if staff can give us just a little bit, hey, it worked out great. When I drive over there, I think there was some sluffage in some certain areas, but that areas did get repaired. But is that an option, and would that provide us with a more economical way of doing more with our revenue? If you don't have the answer, that's also okay, because, you know, I just kind of launched it on you now.
Yeah, a very good technical question. But before I get there, I want to kind of just talk about the comment that you had on kind of understanding the numbers and stuff. That's actually what Streetsaver does for us. We go through a PTAP round every two years, and we run through all those scenarios and all those analyses. And we do that every year, and that helps us reset the model so we can understand where we go to address the item. Currently, I think what you're talking about is the kind of cold recycling of the roadway and using that to pave. I know that we've done it in the Crestmore area, and I think that if we were to do anything of that type, it would fall under, like, either a mill and fill or one of our reconstruction projects. And I'll pass that along to the team to answer the question. I'll start off with Haywan, and then you can kind of go from there.
Yes, thank you, Director Lee. Yes, we do have various tools in our toolkit to look at, you know, for the various payment types. We have retained consultants to analyze the pavement structure and then provide the best payment treatment. My understanding is currently we do have for reconstruction projects, full declamation, which is similar to CIR, but it actually goes deeper. And so I think, you know, the cold-in-place remains in our toolkit. I may pass on to Dahlia to see if there are any projects currently using cold-in-place, but I do know that it is, remains in our toolbox.
Yes, currently, we do not have any in design that is cold-in-place recycling. However, we do have recommended treatments as part of the paving analysis that was performed a couple of years ago, so that treatment is being recommended.
That's, I was looking for the one slide, and if we were to quickly look at, that if 10% of our streets are in the very, very poor condition, and those repairs on that are 40 times more than a regular repair, we could kind of start projecting those costs. And Streetsaver can do the analysis, but it would be nice at some point to kind of see, well, what would that cost be to our worst streets to bring them up? And it's probably a really big number. But maybe at a different time, we can talk about that. But thank you for the presentation. It was really good.
Mayor.
Thank you. So last week, I was up in Sacramento with the CCAG legislative team, and one of the things we were advocating for was more dollars for pavement. And countywide, they, based on surveys, they've estimated that countywide, there's about a need of $870 million over 10 years. So we're not alone. And I think everybody's identified that as a need, so it seems like all the cities love pavement to some extent, because that really was a big discussion point for us. It also means that all the cities are going to be fighting for those dollars to get their pavement programs going. And so I think it's great that we have, we've done all the research, we know where we need to go, we have some good programs in place. My question was around, is there anything we could be doing differently that could sort of get us over a hump where... sort of get us over a hump where that, you know, we, we, we lower that annual maintenance by doing maybe one big investment upfront? Have we considered, you know, potentially issuing debt in order to get like a big thing going quickly? You know, is, is that, you know, could we, I mean, if we did, if we did have the funds in one big lump sum upfront, would we actually be able to accomplish? Or would we be saturating our staff with trying to get all the projects going at once? I, I know with, with sewers, we, we did that. We built up some, some capital and then we, we issued debt to kind of get us going and get us over a hump. There potentially could be some economies of scale if we did larger projects and maybe they would be a little bit cheaper if we were doing more of those. And, you know, have we ever considered, I, I think most of our repairs are farmed out to a pavement company. If we have enough of a need, have we evaluated what it might cost to bring some of that in-house and maybe even sharing it with other cities so that we now have projects that are large enough where having those resources in-house might offset the cost of having to farm it out and the cost of doing the contracting and everything? So just, you know, thinking out of the box, you know, we, I think we have a good formula and we know that it could work given the right funding, but is there anything else we could do that's just kind of way out there in left field that could get us some benefit?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilmember Chalazar. Great, great ideas. We've often thought about ways to help solve that. I think some of the stuff you highlighted in terms of kind of the, you know, the bonding and the other stuff, those are great policy questions and discussions that we probably should have. You know, quite simply put, what's the thing, the one thing that we can do to help our streets is actually invest in our streets more, right? And so I, I hope that I, that answer kind of falls to, through to the community. In terms of the innovative solutions and how we can do stuff and will a one-time infusion help our streets, the answer is yes, right? Because you bring certain streets up to 100 because you reconstruct them and then we can just go and then just start stories on them. So that will be good. You can do that one-time investment. I think over the next five years, I think Streets Saver had the dollar amount of like 62 million dollars to be able to bring our streets, to bring the overall system up to a PCI of 81 or 82, right? For us to do that over, over the course of five years. That's what we want to do. Now, if we want to do, I think Streets Saver, we can look back into the analysis and like focus solely on the failed streets, what that dollar amount is. I will just say it will, for most people, sound astronomical and to a point where people will look at that number and then they'll just back away. And so that's why we go through this methodology of trying to address the best verse. And, you know, we, we really distilled this presentation to try to simplify as much as possible so it's understandable to people. But that does not mean we do not have nuanced discussions of which methodology we use. There are failed streets that are from 0 to 24 in the PCI that maybe we could fix with an overlay, right? We have to do that engineering, that analysis. Now, there are economies of scale if we do larger projects. The only challenge that we're going to have is that people give us $60 million, let's say, and Christmas comes to me early next, next week. It's going to take us time to, to, to go through $60 million. The hands that it passed through are, are the people on that panel right there. So it will take time. We can do it and there are economies of scale that will help, right? It's better than us doing $60 million with the paving over five different projects. And so hopefully that answers the question for you and I'm here if it needs further clarification.
That was great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just offer the Vice Mayor some, some additional information. You know, one of the, you, you bond against future revenues, right? I mean, that's, that's the trick of bonding. And, and Nick just slipped me a note that we could, we could bond completely against Measure G and raise $100 million. But keep in mind, Measure G won't be available then because it's going to be tied up in the bonds. So, you know, that's something to remember. And again, this council is in the midst right now of, of exploring this idea of a new revenue measure and that too, you could, you would basically bond that money or that revenue stream to sort of get the, the big influx of cash so that we could invest sort of heavily into whatever the community might want us to have, to invest in. So, you know, the, the, the investing in these is, I mean, the bonding rather is a smart idea if we have both the capacity to do the work, we can perform, and we can pay it back. Because keep in mind, the bonding is like 25 to 30 years. We won't be around when they're still paying those debts. So it just, it's things to keep in mind, but I, I, I think the idea about getting clever and creative is, is the right approach because keep, continuing to do what we're doing is probably not going to be sustained.
Right. And I was, you know, looking at the, at the slide where we see that the, the cost to maintain is far less than the, the cost to do it. So it almost seems like if we could get away with making a huge one-time investment, getting us up to a point where we have a much smaller annual need to maintain what we have, it seems to make a lot more sense than just throwing good money after bad.
One last question. How many centerline miles do we have in San Bruno? Is it 90?
Yeah, it's approximately 90 and then 180 lane miles approximately.
180 lane, okay, thank you.
Okay, I know that we've spent a lot of time on this topic, so just as a reminder though too, you know, Measure A that the voters did is up in 2033. Measure W is up in 2038. Those are revenue sources that we current, that the county goes through the transportation agencies has, but those again, we don't know what the future may hold. So with that, I want to thank all of you very much for your time, your presentation, the work, the passion that you have about paving. So appreciate it. Please get home and enjoy the rest of your evening. With that, we will move on to the next item. Item B.
Item B, receive report on the city's fiscal year 2024 to '25 general fund budget development.
And before, as the CFO comes up, we are close to the 10:30 PM. So do we have any action to extend the meeting and for how long?
So I'll, I'll make a motion, but should I ask, is it 11 o'clock late enough? Should I go to 11:30? What do you think?
The CFO has been trying to streamline his presentation as he's been waiting, but he's nodded yes, so if...
Let's do 30. We can always do more later.
All right, I will make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
Motion and second to extend to 11. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. No opposed. Pass unanimously. Again, thank you to the Public Works team very much. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Nick Pagaros. I'm the city's chief financial officer. As the mayor mentioned, I have trimmed the presentation that the council received earlier in the interest of, of time. However, we will cover all the, the main points that, that are necessary for this, for the, this evening. So just to kick it off, we'll do a budget overview specifically focusing on the process. Then we'll go into our revenues and expenditures as they stand today. The budget is a very dynamic document and I'll, I'll point out some areas that are, that, that change almost daily, including today. And then some potential measures for moving forward to address the, the structural deficit that, that we're faced with. The objective, what we're seeking from city council this evening is feedback on the, on the identified budget balancing measures for fiscal year '25. The budget document is wrapping up in its preparation for the city manager's recommended budget. And there are several things that are included, there are several things that are not. The ones that are not, we're, we're, even the ones that are, we're hoping to get council feedback and on any areas of concern that perhaps we should, we should re, relook at. So just very quickly, the budget process, boy, can't even see that. Budget process, just for the benefit of the public, our fiscal year begins July 1. We kicked off our budgets in the first half of, of the fiscal year. The council retreat was a pivotal moment for council to provide feedback and input. Most specifically, you received the budget input, the budget forecast and CIP preview as well as the budget priorities, or budget principles and priority initiatives, which you then adopted in February. In March, we had our CIP study session. The purpose there was to sort of put a bow on the CIP budget so that we could then focus our efforts on operating, on operations. This evening, council took, took action to adopt the user fee schedule update and we're also providing this preview. In May, we will be publishing the budget as well as conducting a public work, budget workshop. And then of course, in June, the, there's the public hearing on June 11th and the council will, will consider the enabling resolutions for the budget on June 25th. And of course, we're here in April. So just going back a little bit in time to the retreat and the information that we shared at that time, as part of the budget preparation, every year there are some items that introduce uncertainty and concern that, that will challenge or make our budgeting process easier or more difficult. What I've done is provide a little bit of a reordering to, to identify some of the more significant impacts on our fiscal year '25 budget. Most significantly, as I shared with the council at the, when we, when we presented the forecast, we received information from the county that the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, VLF, is, it has reached a point where the money to backfill that revenue is no longer, is no longer sufficient to meet the, the cities across the county, including the county, to meet the, the revenue requirements that, that have been a structural revenue for cities in, in this area. Additionally, this is the final year of the, we're, we're in the final process of winding down positions that were funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. We have greater clarity today on the cannabis permitting where, and then there is an include, there is a inclusion in the budget for, for revenue in that area. The U.S. Supreme Court has, has given a decision on the Sheets versus Eldorado County, which speaks to develop, proper development impact fees. And we're currently analyzing the impacts of that. Of course, the state budget, the governor's budget has continued to sort of fluctuate. The Legislative Analyst Office, I'm sorry, is there, is there a question? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Legislative Analyst Office and the governor are sort of at, in some level of disagreement over what the deficit is. The reason this is particularly important to us is that unless the state allocates specific monies to San Mateo County to replace the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, that requires special legislation and appropriation from the state. And it's, it, it does not look likely that, that that will happen in light of the, the budget deficit. Of course, we also have our recruitment and retention, the ability to get, to get the projects done that we talked about, et cetera. There are other issues in future, but in the interest of time, I'll move on. We can, if there are questions, we can go into those. So of course, tonight we're talking about the general fund budget, which is, which is a significant, however, not the entire city budget. You'll see here the city budget appropriations for '25. We're estimating, right now, the status is about $169 million spending plan. This is before we take into account carryover appropriations. So those are unfunded capital projects that will add to this $169 million. The general fund makes up about 73% of that. That's what we're talking about this evening. And then, and then we have our enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, cable, or I'm sorry, city net and stormwater are about 40% of the budget. So the, the overall general fund budget, as it stands today, we have revenue estimated approximately $69 million, expenditures approximately 73, which leaves us with a budget deficit of going into where we are today, about $4 million. You know, of course, the city has a, has robust reserves that, that can, that, that provides, that provide a lever for council consideration when we go through the budget process. We did realign the reserves this year with the councils, with the councils, or the council approved a realignment of reserves. And you'll see here that we have our contingency reserve, which is approximately 10% of our expenditure budget. That's the policy, so those are, that's fully funded. Our budget stabilization reserve is 20% of the budget, so that's fully funded. And then we have some small amounts in one-time revenue reserve as well as assigned fund balance for a total of $23.7 million estimated at the beginning of the fiscal year. When we look at our revenues, clearly the majority of our revenues come from taxes. The second largest component are charges for services and many of those were in the fee schedule, or the, the, yes, the user fee schedule that the council approved this evening. The budget does not incorporate any assumption of council approval of that, so the numbers will change, the revenue numbers will change a bit as we, as we implement those, those modifications. On the expenditure side, as a service organization, our predominant cost is salary and benefits. As I mentioned in an earlier presentation, one of the more significant increases in our, in our compensation is in, in the area of the unfunded, the minimum, the minimum payment required for our unfunded pension liability. The purse performance has not kept up with where it needs to be in order to smooth the, the funding and the, the funding requirements for cities. And so we continue to see adjustments there. Jumping into the budget initiatives and budget balancing measures that we're, that we'd like your feedback on today, what you'll see in the brown box is the city council adopted budget principle. And this budget principle speaks specifically to city council adopted initiatives, strategies that can, and strategies that contribute to the quality of life in San Bruno. On the screen are the five, are the five top priority initiatives identified and approved by council and funding for these, for these are in the, are in the, the budget as it stands On the, another budget principle is to actively pursue revenue enhancements and strive for full cost recovery. I mentioned that earlier in the presentation on the fee schedule. One of, there are a couple of areas that are, that are included in the budget currently and the first is fully budgeting excess ERAF. That's something that we have not done historically. However, we have reasonable assurances, or we have reasonable, reasonable expectations that, that, that we will continue to receive 100% of, of, of the excess ERAF. We've also included a cannabis tax revenue assumption, even though we, the, the process, the, the opening has not yet occurred. We anticipate it at some point during the fiscal year. The user fee schedule is not in the update, however, or is not in the budget. And then finally, most importantly, our major revenue numbers continue to change. Initially, the budget, as, as you see it here on the revenue side, and expected a 2.2 million dollar loss of property tax in lieu of VLF. Last Friday, I received an update from the county with, they expect it to be about 1.4, 1.5 loss. So that is a positive to our, our deficit. I just received today the sales tax projections from our sales tax consultant and the, the good news there is that I don't have to make a significant adjustment to the numbers that are in the budget as they stand today. So that's reassuring. The other areas we'll be focusing on is, is property taxes as well as, as well as departmental revenue. So green checks, those we've already incorporated. Another budget principle is to, is to improve productivity through review of city services. Neither of these items are currently in the proposed, or in the budget scenario that, or iteration that you're seeing this evening. The first would be to reorganize general administration departments. It's mentioned in the staff report that we currently have three vacancies in general administration and there may be opportunities or there, there is a intent to include in the budget, a reorganization to achieve structural savings as a result of those vacancies while maintaining current services. The other idea or the other possibility that we're exploring is looking at moving our recreations and aquatic center and our community development function out of the general fund into special revenue funds. The benefits of these are in, on the, for the recreation and aquatic center. It, the, in a special revenue fund, it keeps the awareness of the cost to provide that service. The in a special revenue fund, it keeps the awareness of the cost to provide that service distinct and separate from the general fund. As I mentioned, as you may recall, I mentioned earlier that currently, the recreation and aquatic center is contributing approximately $2 million to the deficit. And so by us by by locating it in a special revenue fund, it keeps the awareness and the and the visibility of that rather than it getting subsumed by the general fund. Of course, in order to balance the recreation aquatic, the REX, but budget will transfer will need to transfer money from the general fund to support that to backfill. And then, on the community development, currently, the community development department's revenues are lower than their expenditures, and by moving it out to by moving the department from the general fund to the special revenue fund will reduce the surplus, the deficit by about $250,000. Neither of those are included. The another budget principle discussed in the that that the council approved is incorporate an assumption for employee vacancies and salary savings. Currently, we have approximately 15 or approximately 16 vacant positions in the general fund, which the budget include, and those are fully funded in the budget, for a total of about $3.1 million. The current iteration of the budget has a vacancy factor of approximately 1 million or about six full-time equivalent employees. We looked at the history and we're and we're of vacancies and the time to recruit and replace and and hire and onboard new employees, and we're comfortable with the six here. However, there may be opportunities for for additional savings, although that would that would impact if there is direction to explore freezing positions, or you may have, the council may be familiar with that from past budgets. If there is an exploration of that, there will be an impact on services. So again, the objective is to write feedback on budget budget balancing options. A couple of items that we didn't talk about, but but we are, but but were addressed in the in the in the staff report, looking to use reserves for one-time expenditures, specifically non-depart non-recurring department requests. So as we identify non-recurring requests, we would use a one-time revenue. We do have three years remaining on our pension obligation bond debt service. That is an annual debt service in the general fund of about $1.1 million. So there may be a opportunity to use reserves to pay for the debt service and free up the cash flow three years sooner than otherwise otherwise would. Again, the reorganization of the general administration departments, looking hard, taking a hard look at the recreations and aquatic center operations and the cost recovery opportunities there. And then, of course, perhaps not this year, but not for this budget, but for future budgets in order to balance the budget, it really is a question of what's the service delivery that we would like to provide to the community, and can we afford to provide it, very similar to the roads conversation that we just had. And unfortunately, we with the roads, Director Lee had I had had mentioned, there was about $62 million over the next five years to achieve some of the objectives that in on improving PCI. I'll add to that, that we have, as we've mentioned to council in the past, an unfunded capital improvement program of over a billion dollars. And so there are lots of demands, very opportunities, revenue opportunities that become increasingly more difficult as the state takes money from us and also hoists new unfunded mandates on us, as as Director Gilli mentioned, with with respect to the housing element and and the advanced planning. So I know that was a lot. I know I ran through really quick, but happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it, and thank you for, in the interest of time, what you did and getting that information to us. Appreciate it. I'd ask my colleagues, I know there are no speaker cards on this, ask my colleagues if we can keep it succinct and to the point, or if there's questions or stuff due to the hour, because I know we still have more of the meeting to go. Colleagues, Councilmember Medina.
It's okay, but I I know it's late. I know you guys are doing an amazing job. As things get closer for a decision, more things will change. So at this point, I really don't have much more to say than that, just that I see that you're thinking things through, and I will always remember what our city manager told us is that, how bold will this council be to take on the problems that we've had for a long time? So I'll leave it at that. I look forward to the discussions, and thank you for your report.
Okay, other questions, comments? We could do it all known at this time. Vice Mayor?
We'll have plenty of time.
Some of your objectives, because I know you were looking for some feedback, I like what you have outlined and trying to look at that. The reserves, that is something that we have done in the past, of course, and also the reorganization element, I think those are all things we should look at. So I do like where you're going with the objective. All right, with that.
Mr. Mayor, I I hate to do this to you, but I just want to remind the council, you will not see this again until June, meaning there there's going to be no other bites at the apple between now and June. Of course, June, excuse me, you'll have two opportunities. I will I will present to you my budget, and then it becomes your budget. And then, of course, we want to provide the guidance for you to make sure you're comfortable with what we've done, and whatever that might look like with regards to, you know, whether it's new revenues, service cuts in the form of employee cuts and whatnot. We just need to, 4 million is still a big bite. We'll we'll make it. We'll figure it out. I just want to make sure when I bring that bring something to you, that you guys are going to be prepared to have a good conversation and debate, not just among yourselves, but with the community as well.
And I know we have gone, colleagues, whether you were on the council or not, have gone through periods of where there were hiring freezes, or there was a 3% in public safety, 1.5 in furloughs. So what I'm not my, if I could, as you know, Director Lee, we talked about Christmas now, but if I could have that also, it would be not to affect our personnel, like have, not to have any type of reductions. My wish would be that we honor the contracts that we have that are, and we will, but also just thinking outside the box as where I think some of these objectives are going for myself.
And just to assure the council, the the budget that the CFO has prepared does honor the existing labor contracts. There's there's no, as of today, there's no affecting, a negative effect to them.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you again, CFO.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Now, we're going to go to item 10, a council committee reports. Councilmember Hamilton.
So just very quickly, I attended the San Mateo County Progress Seminar in in Santa Rosa, along with our mayor and our city manager. It was great. This is the this particular event is probably my favorite of all of them, because it's it's a chance to both learn and to connect. So just very, very quickly, because I know it's late, we we got a lot of information on the state of philanthropy, the use of AI, how to get how to get federal dollars and how difficult it is as a as a single city, so I've got some ideas there. We had presentations on transit and on strengthening democracy, but it was all great. The the opportunities to connect were the the highlight for me, just impromptu conversations with colleagues from neighbor from our neighboring cities about how we can work together to solve our many problems, and I have a whole bunch of meetings scheduled with various colleagues from our neighbors to figure out how we can attack some of our problems together.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Just a, I think Councilmember Hamilton hit it perfect. I will tell you, the big talk was VLF up there by mayors and others, so everybody is concerned. Some cities or towns, it could be $15 million. Now, maybe it's less now with some of those news, but it was really concerning. The AI was very informative, that was, and I learned a lot from that. And also on the transportation, that was and a lot of updates on Bill 1031. So anyway, I'll keep it short, but appreciate that opportunity. Seeing nothing else, let's move on to comments from council members. We'll start with Councilmember Marty Medina, review of residential parking permit program through a city subcommittee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In observance of the late hour, I'll keep this brief. Just as a review, at the April 9th council meeting, I asked the council to consider two things. The impact that parking meters have on residents living in the vicinity of the parking enforcement areas. And two, what should the council be doing to minimize these impacts? What I'm asking for is a subcommittee to be made by this body and with the purpose of reviewing the residential parking permit program for those residents that are being impacted primarily through the parking meters. And hopefully, that'll also provide a glimpse into what this council has mentioned a number of times about the interest to have a more effective residential parking permit program.
I know we have a speaker card, so let's turn to the speaker, because it's getting late first, before I ask counsel.
Justin F., if you would please approach the podium.
I think the parking permit is a good idea, especially since it affects mostly one side of the city that has already a lot of parking issues. On top of that, especially with all the with the paid parking, I think it's important that the city puts some of that money towards more visible improvements in the downtown region. That way, you know, there's a lot of talk tonight about increasing confidence between voters and the council. If the city can see, if city constituents, residents and constituents can see that the tax dollars or that the money that they're paying into parking goes towards more visible improvements, that's something that is going to be a very easy signal for people who don't stay this late, who don't really pay as much attention to the city council meetings and all the presentations, and don't have the time to educate themselves on what's going on. It's a really easy way for them to see that, you know, the city is paying attention, that the council and city staff is working hard to make sure that the money is going towards a place where voters both want and can see. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is, again, regarding the parking permit program, is what's being asked, not on that. But yes, next speaker, please. Just go right ahead. You're you're right there. Thank you for your patience.
Thomas Wells, 800 block of Eastern Avenue. I am tangentially affected by the parking program.
Let's pause the clock. Apologize. Let's begin, and please take your time, you can start over.
Yeah, being in the 800 block, I'm not directly affected by the metering downtown, but I, and we've all discussed this agnostium in the past with with people stopping to park their car long term, going to the airport and stuff like that. That aside, I just would like to comment quickly on the the program. Right now, it's slated to be an opt-in type of program where you would require about 51% of the residents to assemble and everything else. To be to get a program started, I would want to put my vote in on doing an opt-out system and basically roll it out for certain streets or certain neighborhoods and 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 then allow the the public to opt out, because I think it will just never happen, or it's it would be a long slog to have residents self-assemble into and 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 get 51% of their people to to do it. And then the second part is that the the permit fees, I believe, should be exponential in cost. In other words, the first one per address, I would imagine, could be free, and then the second one would be a moderate fee, but then any above two would be not prohibitively expensive, but more expensive to, especially down where I live, down in the in the flatlands, there the the number of car, the the housing lots are so tight, and the number of cars per address are fighting over 20 feet of space in front of each house, and you're lucky if you have a driveway. So I believe that the the fees should reflect that to, so people can self-moderate the number of sp- our spaces and permits that they receive. And that's it. Oh, one other thing, during the the paving program, I would, I had some questions and but you didn't open it up for, I don't believe you opened it up for public comment, but in because of the time, I won't go in agnostium about this, but is there someone I could email my questions to?
I had checked with the clerk that there wasn't any speaker cards in. The answer is yes to your question. Is the is the information on on his slip?
At the back of the table there, where you picked up the speaker cards, there's a flyer, and on the back of it, it has the different department phone numbers and information.
And Public Works.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. So let me let me ask, so we're the comments is about through the metered parking. So I know we were supposed to be getting data and coming back to kind of see what the the effect was. There was a study done, now we started the program Jan, January, hello, April 1st, and then it really hasn't officially, as far as the citations, I think those have taken effect now. So what were we hoping to get from this data, that we're going to come back at a future time to actually have real data? And I think that was what was said by staff is, we need data. We can't just speculate.
Right. And so, I mean, going into this program, we didn't exactly know how it would work, but we knew we'd have some level of success, we just needed to measure it better. And so I think what the chief, what Chief Johansson said was, give us some time, and I think that the time was three to six months, to look at the rates, to look at whether the turnover is happening, to look at the number of citations, to see what the merchants feel, to see what the residents feel, and sort of all that data, coming back, and then sort of evaluate whether or not we need to pivot at all. We may not need to pivot at all, or we may need to do a massive pivot, because maybe it's not working the way it was was proposed to work. I will say anecdotally, as I go downtown, I am driving, there are parking spaces. So if we're looking just at the availability of parking spaces, they are there. Now, I think one of the things Councilmember Medina is asking about is, what are the spillover effects, right? What are the unintended consequences? I think there may or there may be some unintended consequences in the residential neighborhoods. That's something that I think we could look at. I think you heard from a Mr. Marshall a couple of weeks ago about the idea of, gosh, we gave permits to businesses, but we didn't authorize permits for residential folks who happen to be in the in the newly defined district. You know, was it was it an oversight or not? As of now, we have no authority to give them those permits. Those are the kinds of things I think we will look at coming back with. But we're three weeks in right now. I mean, we we need more time for the data to become more meaningful, and I would argue minimally three months, if not actually six. But that's what my expectation would be. And Chief, I don't know, did I hit it all right, or is there anything you want to add?
Okay. And again, yes, from Mr. Marshall, and also there's the preschool on that also is in that same situation. So when the when the program was first developed, it was not to have it imposed. It was the opt-in, not have it imposed at that time. And three of us that sit up here were on that, and we spent quite a bit of time. Councilmember Hamilton was on the TSPC, and then the two Medinas were on the council, and Mark Howard, who was also on the TSPC, were the folks. So I think one of the problems that comes down to, and I always remember having a a meeting at Bay Shore Circle, and it was on the Gray meeting at Bay Shore Circle, and it was on the grade separation on Scott. Everybody there was in sync when it came to about what not to do, don't take the homes. And then when the meeting concluded, it was about 50 folks there, then the discussion, other topics came up, and one of it was the parking. And again, there's no meters there, but the problem that I saw neighbor against neighbor was about, well, then I'll just need a permit for every car I have. Well, but what we're saying, if it is, it's probably 1.5, or let's just round it up and say, okay, everybody gets two. And that, that's where then it becomes this, well, I need more. So what am I supposed to do? I mean, I know I have a house in my area, it doesn't have a garage, doesn't have a driveway. So, you know, what do they do? When you have apartment buildings, is it two per unit? I mean, so there's all that, but if they have parking within inside, so there's a lot of complexity to it, it's just not an easy answer. But anyway, other colleagues, I'm sorry, I've talked a while. Councilmember Hamilton.
So you're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. The, when we, when we were on that, that committee all those years ago, putting together the residential parking permit program, we, we, we had to operate within guardrails that were set by the then-city manager and the then-police chief. And because we were staying in those, in those particular guardrails, we ended up with the program that we, that we have. And I would call it completely ineffectual because not a single, not a single neighborhood has come forward to even propose adopting a program. There hasn't even been a failed attempt to do it. So I'm obviously in favor of looking at the residential parking permit program. It's never been easy to say. And, and this body already, I agendized this several meetings ago, I think it was late in 2023, to ask staff to come back with a, with a report on it. And that was, that was approved, so I'm assuming that's in the, that's in the pipeline somewhere, but I know we have a lot going on. But when we look at this, we're going to have to, we're going to have to not necessarily stay in those guardrails and, or at least discuss what, what it would look like to not be in those guardrails. So for example, having a program based on licensed drivers. If you're licensed at a particular address, you get a permit. And, you know, because we have, you know, trying to stay within, okay, you only get two per address, and with the housing crisis and people, you know, more and more people living at a single address, that simply doesn't work and it will never, and it will never work. And what, one of the things that I've seen when we're looking at downtown parking and looking especially at the lots, but even the, but even San Mateo Avenue and the other, the other streets that now have meters, the cars that didn't belong there are gone. So, so, and that made things better. So even if you're at a point where if you were to give a, give a permit to everybody who's, who's, has a, who is, has a registered car, registered in their name at that address, you get a permit. Even if that number of cars that that would total exceeds the number of available spaces in the given area, you're still getting rid of the cars that don't belong, the people who are, you know, storing their work cars and all these other things, and it makes it better. So this was an argument I made seven years ago when we, when we were doing the residential parking permit program. It didn't fall within those guardrails. Those are things I think we need to at least discuss to, just to try to figure out what that would look like. I do understand that we need to get more data and, you know, maybe now is not the time to start up this, start up the subcommittee, but we are going to need to do it soon because, you know, those, those neighborhoods are definitely impacted. And because it was mentioned when we were talking about the, you know, the different things, the way we'll tweak, tweak the program, we do want us to look at short-term, extremely short-term parking, being able to park for 10 minutes or 15 minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to come back. I was waiting for everyone to, did you have any comments, Mr. Mayor?
I did.
Okay.
I think that what I go back to, because I know we have things, is that, is this a new initiative? We could say probably no, because it's, there's something already in place. It is going to take staff time, and I think during the budget process, I think that's where the focus should be right now, balancing our budget, getting our Recreation Aquatic Center open, and also I think data is what we probably need to look at it at a broader scale. Does it, does the data that come back modify what we do as far as the metering or the various other elements that you just mentioned at the end? Please, Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, I see it as two separate issues. The meters, getting them to work, being able to potentially accept a quarter for 10 minutes, all that data, I'm not talking about it. What we can see with our own eyes is the metered parking is working. I drive or walk past the back lots at four, five, and six, or I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, and then there's six, seven, eight on the others, on the west side, I believe. And the very first lot, three cars, and there's probably 20 spaces plus. Then you go to the next lot, probably only 20% of these spaces are taken. And then as you get closer to Main County Market, it's probably 50. And then when you get to H&R Market, which is our busiest store, there's probably, it's 80% occupied. On the other side is probably on the six, seven, eight, those, those lots are probably half-full or so. But what I'm hearing from the residents is now I come home, I can't park during the day, I can't leave during the day because as soon as I leave on Mastick, somebody comes and takes that spot because it's free on that street. So I'm not asking for really too much staff time here. It's just trying to be formally recognize the need as the council that while staff is working on the data and the kiosk and how to deal with offloading, unloading zones and what to do, that we can in parallel have a subcommittee who meets more or less independently. And I think the mayor and Councilman Hamilton would say, when we had these subcommittees, we did a lot of it on our own. We didn't take too much staff time. We eventually touched base and then we went on our own. So I don't want to take too much time on it. I'll make a motion that we set up a subcommittee to look at the residential parking permit program for the areas impacted by the parking meters here in San Bruno.
All second.
Okay, so there's a motion and second to have the subcommittee, which I guess would start effective immediate because it would be appointed. Is there any discussion or comments? Okay, the motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so it is passed. I think.
Is that unanimous?
Yes. What I think is, would be helpful is some parameters. What, what, what I know when we went through this is like, oh, I already heard it here. Okay, give out as many. So if there's 50 cars and there's 20 spots, give out 50 permits, then that doesn't still resolve that parking element. I don't want, expectations say, now I'm going to have a place to park. Well, not if we gave out 50 and there's 20.
Well, certainly.
It's not realistic. So I just don't want folks to feel that this is like the end-all answer. I do think too, I do worry about staff time. I was hopeful that we could get through the, some of the budget process and balance, get the Recreation Aquatic Center open, because this will take staff time. I mean, there's already a system in place, but to, to say it won't, it will. And they're going to have to do some, some work on it as well. So anyway, Tom.
Through the chair, what I, what I would, what I would think we could do especially now, and I completely agree, we shouldn't be taking staff time for this right now during the budget. As Councilmember Medina said, I think the subcommittee could, you know, engage with residents just to get, just to get feedback. We're smart enough to know that we're not going out and promising, I'm going to give you this, I'm going to give you that, because we don't have the authority to do that. Whatever, whatever the subcommittee would, would come back with as recommendations would be only, those would be only be recommendations and no changes are going to be made without the full council. And none of that's going to happen for, you know, for, for months. But, but to, just to empower a subcommittee to go and start putting those ideas together and, and, you know, coming up with, with options, just to see what, what those, what those options might be. So I, you know, we talked about establishing a subcommittee, but not what it would be or not who it would be, and I volunteer my services for that subcommittee.
I can see there's discussion, so hold on.
The question that came up, it was, you are agreeing to form a subcommittee. Who serves on that subcommittee is still yet to be determined, and what we would, we were thinking is we would just bring back this item at the next council meeting for the selection of the subcommittee.
Okay, so this is now going on to do that? Okay, understood. So why don't we?
Is it possible to just, no, it's not possible.
Done on the agenda is what they're telling us.
Review of a residential parking permit program through a city council subcommittee.
So the council has said it.
It's a yes.
A yes.
Okay, I'm just, okay, all right. I think we've done something similar, but no problem. I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Any other?
Yeah, I got a couple other things.
Go ahead, please.
Here's the next one. So last week I, I'm sorry, last week I attended a conference for Peninsula Clean Energy in San Jose, and I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Millbury's mayor, Anders Fung, who also serves on Peninsula Clean Energy. And one interesting topic we discussed was his interest in setting up a Millbury-San Bruno Subcommittee to review potential cost savings and partnering to provide services to our communities. I believe I sent an email out to the city manager and mayor about this. I look forward to talking to them more and bringing this back to the council to review. The, I have two other things. Second Harvest is tomorrow from 1:45 for volunteers to 4 o'clock. It's at Bel Air Elementary. We are now serving up to 360 families. The address is 453rd Avenue. One other thing is I was invited to One Lab Cafe for a town hall. This is what Rebecca, the owner, is calling it. Interesting enough to talk about parking meters, residential parking permits, and improving downtown. So for those of you that want to attend, it's at 6:30 tomorrow night at 486 San Mateo Avenue. Thank you.
Yeah, just very quickly regarding Second Harvest, if you are food insecure and you want to participate and get food, you can sign up on the spot and, but, and get there early. We have been running out, so don't show up at 4. You know, get there as early as you can to get in, to get in line to make sure you can get, get food. And then the, the monthly pancake breakfast at the American Legion is canceled for this month, so we will, the next one will be the last Saturday morning in May.
And I had some information in regards to Caltrain, but in the interest of time, I'll submit my comments and statements to the city clerk that can include that and get staff, get this meeting adjourned so staff can get home. So the next regular city council meeting will be held on May 14, 2024 at 7 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.